I am going to call to order this meeting of the Town of Hingham Select Board on March 8th, 2022. The time is 6:04. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording this meeting? I see none. I will note for the record that members of the Select Board participating this evening are Bill Ramsey, Liz Klein, and myself, Joe Fisher. The first item on our agenda for this evening is to consider approval of the minutes, and we are looking at the minutes of March 1st, 2022. I am prepared to proceed. Bill and Liz?
I'm ready.
I'm ready.
I'm ready to accept the motion then.
I make a motion to approve the minute stated March 1st, 2022.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye, they are approved. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the collective bargaining agreement with the Hingham Library Staff Association, SEIU Local 888. And I believe we have, I saw David Pace, and I'm not sure I saw Courtney Orwig, is she with us?
Don't see her, don't see her, Joe.
Would you prefer that we wait?
No, that's okay.
So then, David, if you don't mind putting us through our paces and giving us a summary for our consideration, and we welcome you to our meeting.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. Sure, this is the final agreement, the actual formal collective bargaining agreement with the libraries union. We had discussed and approved a memorandum of agreement with the libraries union, I think back in December, maybe a little earlier, kind of memorializing the negotiations. To give a top line, you know, which we went through in detail back then, the agreement provides for an equity adjustment to the compensation for the union members, as well as a 3% general wage increase. It also recognizes or includes Juneteenth as an official holiday and extends a fifth week of vacation to members of employees of library who've been there for five years, so both of which are consistent with the town bylaw and changes we made to the town bylaw. Overall, I think the negotiations, as in the past with library, were very collaborative, very fruitful, and just wanted to just give a thank you both to the Select Board and Town Administration for their support, but also to the library union for their conduct and integrity and kind of honesty that they went through this agreement and with the goal to move quickly to reach a good agreement. I think everybody came away very happy with the results, so.
And am I correct that this agreement is retroed back to July 1st of 2021?
Correct, correct. The old agreement expired as of June 30th, 2021, so this one will be effective as of July 1, 21, and will be for three years, a three-year term.
Great. Liz Klein. Questions or comments?
Thank you, David. I know we went through this in detail, so, and nothing's changed since then, so no questions, thank you.
Bill Ramsey.
No additional questions. Appreciate the work, David, you and Courtney, to get on this CBA.
Yes, thank you. Are there members of the public with comments or questions concerning the collective bargaining agreement with the Hingham Library Staff Association? I see none, so I am prepared to accept a motion.
I will make a motion to sign the collective bargaining agreement with the Hingham Library Staff Association, Local 888, SEIU AFL-CIO, effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye, it is approved. Looking, do we yet have Tom Mayo joining us? I do not see him, Art, I do see you. Do you know where Tom is?
He is, he is in the building, he is in the office. Bear with me, I will go check.
The next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Energized Advisors LLC to assist in the development of a climate action plan for the Town of Hingham. I saw Kathy Riley, is Brad Moyer here as well? There he is, Brad.
I am, Joe. Good to see you, Joe.
So if Kathy, do you want to take the lead or have Brad do that?
I'll be happy to do it, and Brad can certainly chime in. We are requesting the approval of the Climate Action Plan plan consultant, right? So we issued an RFP for a consultant for the Climate Action Plan that was approved at town meeting last, in last year's annual town meeting. We received four bids and the evaluation team reviewed them. The team consisted of a subgroup of the Climate Action Planning Committee. They made a recommendation to the full committee, the committee voted to recommend a company named Energy ZT and in the amount of $80,000, which was the amount anticipated and reserved for that for that purpose, so.
Can you talk about where the funds will be coming from?
Sure, the municipal, Hingham Municipal Light Plant and the town had an agreement last year pending town meeting approval, which subsequently was to, that the HMLP would provide $80,000 from their budget to pay for this consultant to develop the town's climate action plan. And so we're requesting that you approve pending the receipt of the $80,000 from HMLP to the town, and then the contract will be, will begin if you approve it.
Brad, anything you wanted to add?
Um, I can add nothing a little or a lot.
I'll start with, I'll start with the little. I'll start with a little.
Well, first off, I want to thank Kathy. Kathy's been a fantastic partner through all of this, guiding the team through the process. And with her help, I thought we got very, four very strong submissions. The evaluation team in evaluating the proposals, what brought in, I've, I've heard two new versions of how to pronounce this company's name, and I promise you, we've had three or four of our own. So I'm going to call it Energist, because that's what we seem to have landed on, but there are multiple other options. But um, the, what led us to select Energist as our top choice is that in the ranking criteria, they were, had the strongest references and recommendations, particularly at the local level. So this consists of individuals from the Cohasset area. Tanya has many years as Cohasset's Chair of their Alternative Energy Committee and knows folks in Hingham and Cohasset very well and has strong recommendations and references. Another individual, Jenny Leclair, used to be on the Energy Action Committee. Many years ago, she was the first sustainability director hired in Dedham and was instrumental in developing their plans, and they were a pioneer in the greater Boston area and the work that they've done over the years. And again, very strong recommendations for her and the work that the group has done. They had a solid proposal put together, excellent community engagement strategy, which we considered key to the effectiveness of any climate action plan. And, and their knowledge of the Massachusetts marketplace for technologies, grants, and other opportunities was in the lead of the other proposals that we received. So on that, we thought that they were the top contender.
Great. Thank you. I just want to, just to provide the context, I know Kathy mentioned this, but just, just reading very briefly from last year's town meeting, Article 13. The question was, will the town vote to raise and appropriate borrow transfer or from available funds a sum of money to be spent by the town for the purpose of creating a climate action plan, which will evaluate a wide range of carbon emission reduction strategies and propose measures within the Town of Hingham to achieve a zero sum of carbon emissions produced and take out of the atmosphere, quote, "net zero" by the year 2040 or another target deemed feasible, or act on anything related there too. And this action is consistent with and is in furtherance of Article 13 from the last town meeting. Liz Klein, any comments or questions?
Sure, thank you, Brad, thank you, Kathy. Just curious, did the other three bids come in around $80,000? Is that kind of the standard price for this scope or?
Yeah, so in the, we, in the RFP included the budget amount, and the lowest bid received was $78,000. The next lowest bid was $79,724.51, which was an astounding figure to me, talk about precision. And then the other two were both at $80,000, so you were talking at most a 2.5% differential.
Got it, okay. And what is the timeline for the consultant to do the plan?
Sure, so in the RFP, we put for three timelines that we were shooting for. The first was to have the contours of the plan sufficiently developed by September 30th of this year. The rationale for that date is we wanted to know in advance whether there was anything in our plan that may require action at town meeting. So we wanted to know by September 30th, so that we could sufficiently develop and move forward to putting forward a warrant article recommendation before Select Board and Advisory. The next date was to have a rough draft of the plan completed by December 31st of this year. That way, we could have an opportunity to submit it around for comments and receive comments before town meeting, again, if any action would need to be taken for the plan at town meeting. And then lastly, would just have a final draft of the plan by March 31st of 2023.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep. And just following up, I note for the record that the contract has that March 31st, 2023 deadline in it as when the deliverables need to be provided, so thank you. Bill, any comments or questions?
Brad, appreciate your, all the work you've been doing and putting this together. Sorry if I missed it, has this company, have they done any plans for any other communities?
Yeah, so that was one of the things that we requested of each of the respondents. And Energist of our top two was the closest to having similar plans. So what do I mean by that comment? While the company itself did not have a climate action plan it could point us to for work that it's done, Energist as a company is a collection of consultants who work in this space. So the respondents, I should say, the individuals who will be doing the work in their individual capacity has each done this type of work in the past for different communities. So while the company itself doesn't have a climate action plan, it pointed us to, the individuals have worked on climate action planning, so we felt confidence in their capabilities.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
And has the money been transferred over from Hingham Light yet, or we're still waiting on it?
Bill, the money has not been transferred over yet. But the, the vote will in fact provide that the execution of this contract will be contingent upon the town's receipt of those funds.
Oh, got it, okay, great, thank you.
Yep, good point. Any members of the public with questions or comments? Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion and just make sure that we're looking at the latest motion sheet for this motion.
I make a motion authorize a town administrator to sign the agreement with Energy ZT Advisors LLC to assist in the development of a climate action plan for the Town of Hingham in an amount not to exceed $80,000, subject to receipt of sufficient funds from the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye, we are approved. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, much appreciated.
Really appreciate your, your work here, and thank you, Kathy. Next item on our agenda is a discussion of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Article BBB, zoning bylaw requirements for accessory uses. I believe we have a guest appearance by Emily Wentworth, I look forward to. Emily, are you there? There you are.
I do, hello, good evening. Actually, we have a more prestigious guest appearance from the Chair of the Zoning Board, Robin McQuire. The zoning board initiated this warrant article, and Robin would be happy to give you a little bit of background on the intent.
Great, Robin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. It's nice to be here. Thank you, Joe, and thanks, Emily. I don't know about the more prestigious part that Emily just said, but I'm happy to give you some background on this article. So this is Article BBB, requirements for accessory uses. And this is an article, as she said, that's put forth by the Zoning Board of Appeals. As you probably all can relate, the pandemic provided greater opportunity for residents in Hingham to conduct activities from their home. And permitted accessory uses in connection with a principal single or two-family dwelling use has included resident offices, studios, or customary home occupations. And most home-based businesses can be operated without impact on the surrounding neighborhood. However, over the course of the pandemic, the zoning board has seen some potential to cause disruption to the neighborhood, and for that reason, we're putting forth this article. Section 3J of the zoning bylaw regulates accessory uses and requires that accessory uses, quote, "shall not alter the character of the premises on which they are located or impair the neighborhood." And the board, after review of a recent application for administrative appeal related to an accessory use, noted that more specific parameters would help the Building Department, as well as the zoning board, with respect to the administration of the bylaw. So the primary amendment supported unanimously by the zoning board and the planning board adds certain factors for consideration by the Building Commissioner as the zoning enforcement officer and the board to assess the character and neighborhood impacts. And if you, I don't know if you have the proposed article in front of you, but if you look at it. Okay, if you look at it, you can see that.
If I can, if I can just interrupt, Michelle, do you want to put that up on the screen so that we can all track that together? Sorry, Robin.
No problem.
How's that?
Thanks very much. So Emily may have more to say about this and may want to walk through this in some more detail, but you can see that specific to the factors that are listed to be considered potential impairment to the neighborhood, we've listed noise, light, odor, sound, traffic congestion, and pedestrian safety, availability and safety of parking, and frequency of deliveries. And those are basically the items that we think would help us, you know, particularly if there were an appeal of a decision of the Building Commissioner, try to, to figure out whether an activity, whether it's being conducted in a residential area or even in a commercial area, because this actually will apply to commercial areas as well, you know, has altered or impaired the character of a neighborhood.
If I might just add to that, Robin just covered the real intent of the bylaw and then the, the primary amendment in that section B. The version that we're screen sharing right now, maybe the original version and not that, that was recommended by the planning board, so I don't know if you think it's worth it to go through some of the, the updated version.
Yeah, so Emily, what, I just want to make sure, so the proposal is, am I correct, to delete Article 3J1A? And reformatting Section 3J1B as Section 3J1A?
That's, that's been, that was the original warrant article as proposed by the zoning board through the public hearing process with the planning board. There were suggested edits, and there was consensus between the two boards on what those, what form those would take. So there is a revised version of this, I'm happy to screen share if.
That would be helpful.
Helpful.
Thank you.
Yep. So, oh, I apologize. I have obviously way too many windows open, can you see my whole screen?
We do, but before, before continuing, Robin, do you have a quorum of the ZBA on this call?
I think it's just me, Joe.
I thought I saw someone else. Just want to make sure.
I, I can no longer see everybody because of the screen share, so.
I did not see another ZBA member, Joe.
Okay.
I don't think so, I think it's just me.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay. So this is the slightly modified version that was unanimously approved, you know, for a favorable recommendation at town meeting by the planning board. So it's not, now there is just a small change to Section 3J1 as opposed to 1A and reorganization. We're adding the clause and clearly secondary to the statement that, you know, right after or following accessory uses shall be those uses that are customarily incidental, and now it will read and clearly secondary. This, like the original warrant article, is really just a reorganization that language currently was in the next section of 3J, which will be amended by Item 2. So that would be replaced in its entirety essentially by the, you know, the language that was reviewed in that first warrant article. The one change is that, you know, while the zoning board was reacting when it proposed this particular amendment to residential accessory uses and how they may impact a neighborhood, they didn't, you know, directly intend to limit, you know, these parameters only to residential accessory uses. So you'll see the introduction to that states that it's additional requirements now for all accessory uses. So there were just some minor modifications through the process.
Okay. Robin, do you have anything further?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I don't have anything further. Joe, it's, it's a pretty, I think it's a pretty straightforward article, really, to, just to kind of clean up some of the language in the bylaw, make it a little bit clearer and easier to interpret, and also make it easier for the Building Department, you know, to enforce in those, in those situations where that may be necessary, which honestly is, is pretty rare, but it does come up from time to time.
Great. Liz, any questions?
Thank you, Robin, and thank you, Emily, for bringing up this version. I noticed that it, it looks like reference to parking has been removed. Is that intentional or?
So I don't know that there was a reference to parking in prior versions. I'm just kind of flipping through the different iterations of this particular article. I do believe that subsection 5, traffic congestion and pedestrian safety, frequency of deliveries, would get to, you know, parking if there, if there was spillover from a particular accessory use, so that cars were parking on an adjacent public way. That's something that the Building Commissioner, zoning enforcement officer, and the zoning board could consider.
Okay. In visual impacts, is that things like equipment or signage, or what, what does that entail?
Yeah, that's exactly right, Liz. You know, equipment, or in one instance, we had a homeowner who was running sort of a gym or athletic classes outside and had a rock wall and other sort of more commercial, you know, gym-like equipment on the property that was, you know, potentially an eyesore and other neighbors weren't really interested in looking. So it's, it's, I guess it's a little bit vague, but it's, that's what it's intended to address.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Bill Ramsey.
Yeah, first of all, Robin, just wanted to thank you for your leadership of the ZBA. You know, you've been the chair for several years, and you do a great job for, for the town in that position, and wanted to recognize that. So thank you for what you do for us on the ZBA.
Bill, she had a hard act to follow.
You know, I was going to say that.
Very, very.
You've done great work for us, so thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Great article here, you know, I know that, you know, during COVID, there were some issues with, you know, defining what constitutes an impact to the character of the neighborhood. So I really applaud the ZBA for bringing this forward, and I think laying out how the character is changed by these factors is important, particularly with traffic congestion and noise for some of the, some of the different activities, I think, that might go on in the accessory dwelling. So I think this is a great article, and I appreciate the ZBA and the planning board working on this and bringing this forward.
And I, I fully support Bill's and Liz's comments. This is, it's, it's very useful, I think, to have this sort of clarification. And, and you only get this experience as you go through, you know, each application. You see where there's tweaks that will help, help the next case come out in a, in a clear fashion. So this is, this is exactly what we were hoping for. I just had a question as to, I understand the ZBA was unanimous on this, was the planning board unanimous as well?
Yes.
Kathy just voted on February 28th, and as Robin confirmed, it was unanimous.
Yes, great. Are there any members of the public with comments or questions? This is on Article BBB for the town zoning bylaw. This is not something, this is not an article that's being put forth by the Select Board, so we would not typically vote on this. However, because there have been changes, however minor, to the warrant article, Tom, I would recommend that we actually vote to open the warrant and to, to insert the revised BBB. Is that?
Yeah, out of an abundance of caution, Joe, I completely agree with you.
Okay.
So I would second that motion.
Well, so I would, I'll make the motion that we, we open the warrant and insert the revised Article BBB in place of the prior version of the Article BBB, and then close the warrant.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye. Great, Robin, Emily, thank you, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Aye.
So the next item on our agenda is not scheduled till, until 7:00 PM. So what I'd like to do, Tom, with your indulgence, is to move to the COVID-19 update, so we can get that handled, if you are prepared to move forward with that.
I am, yep. Okay, can you hear me?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
So for the COVID-19 update for today, March 8th is that the Department of Public Health is reporting that the seven day statewide average of confirmed COVID-19 cases has declined substantially. Again, from eight hundred and thirty nine on February 27th to six hundred and forty eight on March 6th. And again, that's statewide. Hospitalization statewide have fallen from four forty five on February 25th to three hundred and nineteen on March 4th. That's all good news. The latest data in Hingham shows that the case count has been declining. The DPH has reported a fourteen day daily incidence rate. Of twenty seven cases in Hingham through February 24th. And on March 3rd, the DPH reported a fourteen day daily incidence rate of seventeen. So seventeen down from twenty seven over the course of a week. It is important to note, however, that many residents are now taking home based testing, which is most often not reported and therefore not in these statistics. And as a result, we are assuming that the actual number of positive cases is higher than the statistics show. Regarding COVID-19 test kit distribution, the town has received some eight thousand or so rapid antigen test kits from Plymouth County. And then we did, in fact, conduct two fairly successful distribution days for Hingham residents earlier. Earlier in the year, and we are now making additional test kits available for pickup. And those will be available at the following locations, the Hingham Police Station, that's at two twelve Central Street. The Hingham Fire Station, so Central Fire at three thirty nine Main Street. And the Hingham Rec Recreation Office, which is here at Hingham Town Hall, as well as the Hingham Health Department, and that's all at two ten Central Street. The Hingham Farmers Market will also have them at two oh four Union Street at the Wampatuck State Park Visitor Center. And then the. The Senior Center will also make them available at two twenty four Central Street. So again, police station, fire station, rec, town hall, and the health offices, the farmers market, and the senior center will all have. Test kits available for for pickup free of charge to all Hingham residents. Regarding the pediatric vaccination clinic, the Hingham Public Schools did hold a vaccination clinic, a pediatric vaccination clinic on March 5th. And they administered twenty six vaccinations to Hingham residents. Regarding a masking policy, so on March 4th, I announced my lifting of the masking policy. Which was effective made effective on Monday, March 7th, 2022. So this past Monday, yesterday. Which reverses a policy that I instituted on September 7th, 2021. The decision to lift the policy was made based on the reduction of the number of reported COVID-19 cases in Hingham. High vaccination rates among Hingham residents as well as statewide hospitalization trends. On February 28th, the Hingham Public Schools implemented a mask optional policy in its buildings and on its buses. And on March 3rd, the Hingham Board of Health lifted its mask advisory. So taken together, these decisions leave masking an individual's option in all town owned buildings. Regarding COVID Command Group, I just wanted to report that effective today, this group led by the Fire Chief Steve Murphy has decided to shift to biweekly meetings. We've been meeting weekly. And more often as needed since the pandemic began. This group will continue to monitor the COVID-19 situation and coordinate town actions as needed. I will be reducing the frequency of these COVID-19 reports as well. And of course, as any new news occurs, we will report those as appropriate. Chief Murphy is in fact also organizing input from town departments to assemble a townwide after action review. This project will capture lessons learned to strengthen town operations and resilience in the future. And that'll be an interesting review and report that we get on our, like I said, an after action report for our response to the pandemic. Regarding public health protocols, please continue to take precautions to protect yourself and others from COVID-19. As we all know, vaccination, wearing face coverings, practicing social distancing, and frequently washing hands, among other measures, will help protect us all from COVID-19. On January 7th, 2022, the Hingham Board of Health did issue a revised and. Health advisory recommending this use in that policy has since been lifted. The Hingham, the health advisory is directed to all visitors and employees, or was directed to all visitors, employees in town. The CDC and the Mass DPH are do have a guidance on face coverings. And those guidances can be found on their respective websites. They are changing rapidly, so be aware. Of that. And then the Board of Health is still recommending that, to the extent you use masks. That you use an N95 or KN95 mask as woven cloth masks and gaiters provide less protection. And that is all, Joe.
Thank you. Liz, any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Tom.
Yep.
Bill?
No questions. Thanks, Tom.
So I would just add two comments. First. If you recall, I think there was a last month or the month before, you could order your free at home COVID-19 tests from the government. They announced this week that you can place another order. So if you didn't order or you did order, you can order again. To get your free at home tests and you can order it at covidtests.gov. And the second point, just to follow up on Tom's comment about the CDC guidance. There is still CDC guidance with respect to travel, traveling internationally especially. So again, you should make sure you consult with the CDC guidance for their health notices. Any member of the public with comments or questions on the COVID-19 report? Seeing none, I am not sure that we can take up any other item on our agenda. Prior to 7:00 PM. So. I would recommend we could actually take a twenty minute break and reconvene at seven unless. Tom or any member of the select board thinks that there's something else that we can we can discuss prior to that. Okay, so. Michelle, would if you know, just put up a little note that will reconvene at seven. I will declare a recess now until 7:00 PM. Good evening. The time is 7:00 PM. The select board is now out of recess. And at this point, I'd like to call on our friends at the school committee to call their meeting to order.
Thanks, Joe. I will call the March 8th meeting of the Hingham School Committee to order at 7:00 PM.
And next I will turn to the Advisory Committee to call their meeting to order. Billy, we can't hear you.
Thanks, Joe. I would like to call the Advisory Committee meeting to order on March 8th at 7:00 PM. The Advisory Committee meeting, sorry, the Advisory Committee members in attendance so far, we have Brenda Black, Tina Sherwood, Kristen Degowski. We have. Bob Curley, Jay Meline Cooper, George Dennis, Nancy McDonald. And. That's all I got so far.
Okay. And Carrie, I should have asked you if you wanted to identify members of the school committee who are present for your meeting.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Carrie, I'm the chair of the school committee. I'm participating remotely along with my colleagues, Michelle Air. Jen Benham will be joining us. Ness Corente, Carlos Distilla, I believe is on. Tim Dempsey will not be attending tonight and Liza O'Reilly.
And now I will turn to the Capital Outlay Committee to call their meeting to order.
Well, I'm not sure if Eric has signed on yet. I shot him a quick text message.
Well, I will, this is intended to be a joint meeting, so I will wait a minute or two before proceeding. We have other members of Capital Outlay in attendance? Oh.
I'm here as an AdCom member of Capital Outlay. I don't actually see, I don't see Matt here. I don't actually see any of the other members. Oh, Mike. So I think there are only two of us here thus far.
Michelle, do you know, was this a notice meeting for Capital Outlay?
Yes, it was. And he said he will join shortly.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hey, Joe, how you doing? Sorry, I'm late here.
So any member, any any members, other members of Capital Outlay?
Michelle, I believe that that's Eric. You have three, right?
Yes, we it looks like we have Mike Donovan on the line and.
Dave Lane's here, too.
Yeah, Mike's here. Sorry, I was unable to unmute earlier. Apologize.
So Eric, you realize as the last to join committee, you're responsible providing orders for everyone here?
Okay.
We'll expect the treat shortly. But if you can just call your meeting to order and identify the members present, please.
Sure. So seven oh four, we'll call the Capital Outlay meeting to order. And Mike Donovan and Dave Lane Cooper are present.
Great. Thank you. So with that, we are going to turn to the fiscal year 2023 financial forecast update. And it will be Tom and Michelle to give us the initial presentation.
Great. Thank you, Joe. I'll turn this over to Michelle in a moment. Just wanted to kick it off. This is our final forecast. So we've been doing forecast updates. You've all heard. Throughout the season. Those forecasts are updated on occasion as new information comes in. This is our final forecast, which traditionally includes a path from me in my office towards a. That can be followed towards a balanced budget. So what you'll see when you see this forecast is a balanced budget, a zero in the deficit column. So with that, with that said, and oh, and I'll also mention that. What we've done to get to that balanced budget is to withdraw with remove all additional requests from. Town and school of additional additional requests. And those can be considered by the select board and AdCom. As as we move forward through this process over the next week or two. So but this is a balanced budget presentation that you're going to hear from Michelle. Michelle?
Thank you, Tom. So I will bring up the forecast document briefly. Here. But I find we've found that it's often more helpful to talk about a slide that kind of walks through the changes so that people can follow us. But as Tom mentioned, the the bottom line here is showing a zero, which means that we've balanced FY23. This is one path forward. I'm happy to come back to this document and its subsequent pages, but Sue and I can quickly show this slide that summarizes the changes first. We're not slide, but another spreadsheet. So we had the forecast group met a few weeks ago and talked about an interim interim forecast that had contemplated using this the balance of the stabilization fund. The first two line items here that you see in comparing the previous forecast with the forecast that we discussed yesterday as a group. Talk about reversing the stabilization fund use. So the Department of Revenue came out with some guidance late in February. That basically clarified for us that we weren't able to use the stabilization fund that we were hoping to in FY23. The Sustainable Budget Task Force had recommended looking into the stabilization fund to see if we could accelerate that use. In FY23 to help bridge the budget gap. So we were hoping to use the $2.1 million balance here. But with this new guidance from DLS, we'd need to revert back to our old practice of using about a hundred and seventy eight thousand each year. To reduce the interest related to certain debt excluded projects. So unfortunately, this change widens the hole back by $2.1 million. The other news that we got yesterday afternoon from Plymouth County and when talking about the sources. Is that Plymouth County is going to release, they're going to make available $10 million to member communities to use for revenue replacement. And they said that Hingham could count on $473,502 from the county. For this purpose, so that we can put that towards the FY23 budget. So that helps close the gap by that amount. They did say that if other communities don't seek to use their funds for this purpose, there could potentially be more available to the town. But they won't know that number before our town meeting in April. But at a minimum, we can count on the four seventy three to help us close the gap in FY23. Farther down below, we'll walk through all the different funds that are currently in. This federal funds slash fund balance line. There's different pots of ARPA and SIR and other funds in there, so we'll explain that. On the uses side in this forecast, we also talked last time about. Potentially using some non-excluded debt capacity to fund capital outlay. There was about $249,000 potentially in that line. But when we looked closer at the bands, the the bond anticipation notes that we have rolling over the spring. That capacity is going to be used up with debt service. So that money is won't be available for capital outlay on top of. The capital outlay allocation of 2.7 million. So we just reverse that. That transaction here. That doesn't change the gap at all. It's simply moving one use from another use down below in Article Six. The other two changes that we made before we talk about the balanced budget, one is related to the Conservation Department. A few weeks ago, our board discussed a reserve fund transfer for FY22 to fund Hingham's share of the Straits Pond. Allocation for certain repairs to the title gate over there and some studies. Straits Pond. Monies are split between Hull, Hingham, Cohasset. Hull takes the lead on this account and they paid 50% of the expenditures. But Hingham and Cohasset each contribute 25%. For the FY23 contribution, we needed to add 22,000 to the Conservation Department budget. This is something that the three conservation officers are going to work together in 24, in FY24 and forward to find grant funds to help pay for these costs. Typically, in a given year, the operating expenses are only between three and 5,000, but there's some. Larger repairs and some studies that are making this number go up for a short amount of time. And then the last number that changed, this was something we had been waiting for. The GIC for health insurance voted the new FY23 rates. Last Thursday, I believe. So Sue did some number crunching there based on everyone who's currently on the town's health insurance. And made some assumptions about where they might be in going into the next year. So we were able to reduce that request by 48,000. All of those changes still left us with a deficit of about 3.2 million. And then if I scroll down a little bit, what we did is is what Tom said, we would, we took out all of the additional requests for the school municipal departments. Which lowered the number by about 1.7 million. And then we filled the remaining gap of about 1.5 million with unassigned fund balance. And this little table below here walks through the different pieces that are in that federal funds slash fund balance line. So the first is about 1.4 million in ARPA. This is the second tranche of the direct allocation that Hingham is getting. From the state slash federal government. We got the first 1.2 million last June and use that to help plug the gap in FY22. And the second tranche, we expected this June, and we can use that to help FY23. As I mentioned before, Plymouth County let us know yesterday that there's another 473,000 available for the county for the town to use. And then talking with John Ferris, he let us know that there might be $400,000 in SIR funds not used in FY22 that we could apply to the FY23 budget. And finally, there's the 1.5 million in fund balance that we propose using to plug the FY23 gap. And this totals to 3.7 million in federal funds and fund balance in that line. I can I can go back to the forecast, but are there any questions about these various changes?
Want to go back to the forecast, Michelle?
Yeah. I can go down to the. Article six detail.
Joe, I think that's the end of our presentation. So if you have. Joe, I think that's the end of our presentation. So if you have any questions.
Okay, I will first ask Liz Klein for questions, then Bill, then I'll turn it over to AdCom, then the school committee, and then to Capitally. So I will start with, with Liz.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. So when we're looking, we just had all the, the wages and salaries.
I can go back.
So that obviously, that's no additional requests for personnel. That's based on the wage and classification and the CBA agreements, right?
That's right.
Okay. Okay. And then I know we were reading on the health insurance number, and that's obviously updated. Do you have any sense of if we'll get any additional monies from Plymouth? It seems hard to believe that other people aren't gonna ask for their share.
When I spoke to Tom O'Brien, the treasurer over there, he thought that that was a likely possibility that they would, that some towns may not use it for this purpose, and it would be redistributed. But he couldn't say in what amount, and he said he would not have the information next month. So to the extent that there is more available to the town, we could apply that to the budget, and it just wouldn't come out of unassigned fund balance if that's the route that we choose to go. But at least with certainty, we can plug the $473,000 number in now.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. I don't have any other questions right this second.
So before turning it over, before turning it to Bill, I just want to make sure to follow up on Liz's question, that the wage reclassification work is all reflected in the fiscal year 2023 numbers. Is that correct, Michelle?
That's right. The wager classification and any collective bargaining agreements that have been settled.
Okay, thanks. Bill?
I was gonna ask you about the 473 from Plymouth County, but you said we won't know for another month or so. Michelle?
The 473 is definite according to their treasurer, but anything beyond that, they won't know for a few months.
Okay. My, my second question to you is, the restrictions on the use of the stabilization fund money, are those going to carry over into FY24?
So yes, because what DLS published basically had three different tiers of bond, it was all about bond premiums from excluded debt projects. And it depended if you did it before 20, a certain time in 2016, between 2016 and December of 2021, and then December of 21 going forward. But the two projects, Sue was able, was able to help us track back what monies are actually in the stabilization fund now. And they were both bond premiums from excluded issuances we did in 2016 and before. So that use, unless DLS updates its guidance, won't change.
Okay, thank you.
And if I can just follow up on that one as well. So when we initially made the assessment of using the stabilization funds, we did look at the statute, we did our own legal analysis, and my understanding is that we believed that it could proceed. The guidance that came through, as far as I can tell, it doesn't seem to be grounded in the statute, but it's, that's not a battle that we're looking to, to wage. So we are accepting the guidance and proceeding as if we cannot use those funds. Is that, is that a fair summary, Michelle?
Yes. So the stabilization fund can be used for any lawful purpose, but because we got more clarity on the source of the funds that went into it, when we checked with Bond Council about this new guidance, he advised that we should, we should make sure that, yes, applying that appropriately.
Okay, great. So Julie, I will turn to AdCom first.
Thanks, Joe. And I'd like to note that the advisory committee adopts the remote meeting, open meeting law language read by you at the beginning of the meeting.
Yep.
And I would just ask Michelle if you could scroll down to the bottom of this, the first page.
First page.
Yeah. So we can just see that in the first year out in FY24, the excess is $5.8 million. And then I just want to highlight the use of fund balance and federal funds at the $3.7 million. And that's combined federal aid and unassigned fund balance, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you. Bob?
There we go. Good evening, everybody. I, my question relates to a couple of letters to the AdCom I saw this afternoon that mentioned the discovery of $1.7 million in unspent education funds. And I am pretty much totally in the dark about that. But it, it prompts my question of, do we anticipate that those funds will be, will remain unspent by the end of FY22? And are they available for budget use with respect to FY23? Or they, are they going to fund balance at the end of FY22? And therefore are kind of an offset to the fund balance we're going to use. So I, I don't know who's best to answer that question, or if anybody has an answer, but I'd be very interested.
I can speak to that a little, and then if you turn it over to John. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So we did discuss this. It's a preliminary prediction right now, and it's, we're not at a point where we can say for sure how much is going to be left over. John made some recommendations last night about putting some of the special education stabilization funds to, to make sure that we're protected if we have move-ins or sudden changes in placement for children who are, have out of district placements. And as the committee discussed it, and we also discussed potentially putting it towards some of the, the budget proposals for this year. Just the special education vans, but we, the, the direction was to the administration to take a look and see how do, how to best use that money. John, do you want to maybe elaborate a little more?
Yes, sure. So Bob, so the, the forecast, it's a, it's a forecast. It's preliminary. It's very, you know, forecasting is very humbling. You never know, you know, where the number might come up. The drivers, there's some, so there's some known drivers that have to do with, you know, movement or favorable hiring in, in the budget. There's a, a little bit of a driver that has to do with the, the, the need to utilize some federal grants. And, you know, so, and, and let me say, you know, with the federal grants, especially with the, the rules and regulations surrounding them, you have to be very careful because we can't supplant the basic operating budget from the grants, but we had a IDA grant of a couple hundred thousand dollars that we have to use. So, you know, we, we've planned to use that. And then the, you know, we, we do know that we've had some special education students age out, the age outs that are reflected in the 23 budget actually commenced in 22. So, so we know that we have, you know, some form of money and the 1.7, as I said, it's a preliminary number. You know, it could go up or down by hundreds of thousands of dollars. You know, I could have made a mistake. I mean, the numbers seem like they're very, very big. But what I do know is that we do have some. So I've actually recommended to the committee that we fund the special ed reserve to the tune of $350,000, which would bring that balance up to 750. So if we had a problem with tuitions in this 23 budget, since it's, you know, sharply reduced, that, you know, they'd have some fallback there. And, you know, previously to that, previous to this, I've actually told the town about a $400,000 worth of, of SIR. So, you know, at this point, we're, we're, we're at a $700,000 level at this time, you know, is, could that money be used for capital projects or for other, other opportunities in the school budget? That's going to be a decision of the school committee.
So I guess.
So whether, so whether that, whether some part of that money will be available for, for operating budget use in FY23? When would we have some idea about that?
And I think it has to be, I mean, it has to be discussed, you know, the committee has to like, they, the committee got this firsthand yesterday. So I think that, you know, they had a number of ideas. We discussed a number of ideas. So, you know, I think that we need some time to digest, you know, what we're actually going to, you know, do with the money. You know, and, and a lot will that be dependent upon, you know, what we, what we see as, you know, the budget that we'll obtain for 23. So, you know, I, I think that's a, that's a discussion that we're going to have to have, and we probably will commence those next week in finance.
Okay, thank you.
I see Liz Klein has her hand raised. We can go back to Liz.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Just a, a question about the 1.7 million. Do we know how many FTEs that represents? Are those positions that we weren't, haven't been able to fill yet?
Oh, no, they're all filled. I mean, those, those are, the, the, the positions that we hired have been filled. Some have been, you know, but and we've had, you know, they've been delayed. We've had some delays. We've had some hired and then failed, you know, or hired and, and left and stuff. A couple. I mean, you know, I mean, if there's, if there's like $500,000 roughly worth of like hiring variances or movement variances, you know, maybe half of it has to do with those couple of, of jobs. And the other half has to do with really a favorable pricing environment where, you know, we took in a lot of younger teachers at more favorable rates than was reflected in the budget. So, you know, at this point, all the FTEs that are reflected in the 22 budget are also reflected in the 23 budget. And, and to my knowledge, they're still, they're still necessary. They're still needed. They're still part of the program that, you know, will, will be implemented to the extent if we didn't have any resource, you know, at this point, if there would be, the services would be provided via contract for the services that are necessary. So I don't think, kids are not going underserved. They're, they're getting all the services that, that they need, you know, whether it be by food, the teacher that's in place or, or contract services.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Andy?
Yes, thank you, John. I hate to appear to be picking on you, but the, does, why doesn't the money go into fund balance? Any unspent funds? And, and do you have, you being the school committee, do you have authority to create a reserve account? And, and fund it the way you proposed to put some of this money in the, what do you call the special ed reserve?
Yeah. So Andy, so the special ed reserve was created in 2014, and then subsequently modified in 2015 where we made an application for special legislation in order to, you know, protect ourselves because prior to that, we had some, you know, significant increases during the budget process. I mean, to the tune of five, $600,000 from January through April, where our budget number had to go up by that amount. So after that year passed, we did form a special committee that took a look at the situation and made recommendation for Hingham to file for really a self-rule that would allow us to create a special education reserve account from funds that may be available from the school operating budget during any end of year period. You know, not to exceed 2%. And the idea of those funds is they would be used for unanticipated tuitions and transportation for special education services that may pop up, you know, during the school year or, you know, after that budget happened. So we had no insight of it. But all of a sudden, we had a move-in, we were responsible for some tuitions or, you know, subsequent to a, to us floating, telling what our number was in January, and all of a sudden, we had a new residential come in to the tune of $300,000 or so. We wouldn't necessarily have to increase our budget request at that moment. We would have this fund to fall back on. So it's not anything I'm creating now. It's been long created back in 2015, for 1450. So, so that's a special ed reserve. And as far as, you know, why the money doesn't fall back, the money, the money, that, that's really is going to be a decision of the school committee. It's, it's not my authority to say where the money goes. It has to, the, the money's been appropriated to the school committee. So it's really up to them to come to the conclusions of how they want to deploy this money or give it back. And as I said last night, it's the first time they heard about, of these dollars as well. So I think, you know, we all need sort of time to digest it and figure out what a plan going forward might be.
The, okay. And when you say the, the reserve cannot exceed 2%, is that 2%? Did you say the reserve or the transfer into the reserve cannot exceed 2%? Is it 2% of the total education budget?
Yeah, that's a total balance that the reserve can go up to, maybe, I believe. I mean, I'd have to refresh myself on the warrant, but I believe that. So if we have a $60 million budget, that reserve could get as high as 1.2. I mean, I, I don't think we need to put 1.2 in it, but I think 750, especially in light of, you know, when you look at our responsible 23 budget of 1.43%, a lot of that has to do with, you know, $1.3 million drop in tuitions. That's luck, right? That has nothing to do with, that has nothing to do with school performance or us being, I mean, somewhat, you know, we do to do what we can to maintain children in house, make them more inclusive and, and make the best programs. But, you know, by and large, when you see significant drops like that, it turns out to be luck. And in these couple of years, you have the age outs. You know, I've been here for 11 years. I might have seen one or two age outs, and then all of a sudden I see five age outs. You know, but that's because I'm getting older, too. So we're all sort of aged out of everything. You know, when it comes down to it, and it's luck. But, you know, luck turns on a dime, and all of a sudden, you're, you're back into the swing of things. And this, this amount of money, the 750, that's a couple of resident tuitions. It's not an extraordinary amount of money.
The, one last question. The fund balance memo indicates that for fiscal 20, for example, there was an encumbrance of $117,000 not expended. What, I, I didn't quite understand what the encumbrance meant.
John, you want me to answer that?
Yeah, if you would, Sue, that'd be great. Thank you.
Basically, Andy, it is the school's PO system. If they don't use the complete PO that has been encumbered, it would fall to fund balance, and that's exactly what happened.
Okay, wait a minute. Let me go, their, their purchase order system. You encumber.
They encumber all their unused POs at June 30.
All the unused accounts.
Yeah. And if they don't use it all, then it falls to fund balance.
Okay. And likewise, the surplus of a million something in fiscal 21, did that just go into fund balance?
From where?
I would think, yeah, I think it, it did, absolutely. But let's, I hope every, everybody needs to keep in mind that fiscal 21 was because we got $2.7 million worth of cares reimbursed. Okay? So, so what we did was we used the government money as opposed to the taxpayers' money, which to my dying day, as a Hingham resident, I will say that is the correct thing to do, and I'm happy it went into fund balance.
And, and, yeah, you had a 1.3 in receivables from Plymouth County CARES Act noted in the funds balance memo, and, and that, I guess, gave you a 1.1 surplus that went into funds balance. that went into funds balance.
Yeah, a lot of the spending was different last year. That's correct. Yeah. The, the spending and, and much of it because of the way we operated, we were doing things differently because of COVID. So, you know, and, and all of that qualified for government money. So in, in some sense, we were using the government money because we were doing things differently. And as a result, our normal operations didn't get spent accordingly. So, you know, as I, so, so it's really, you know, I know forever and infamy, a year of always gave this much money back is going to be pointed at the school department is not spending their budgets, but, you know, you don't want to just waste the money. You want to do the right thing with the money.
Yep, uh, clearly appreciate it. I guess the, the moral of the story in, in my mind might be that maybe AdCom should, next time we, we look at the financial policy, consider whether some portion at least of, uh, surplus operating funds uh, should be set aside for, uh, operating budgets for the following year. Just, uh, a thought. Sue, Sue, don't, don't make those faces at me. I'm just, you know.
I've got a lot of ideas on that, Andy, but we, we've discussed them, you know, but a lot of it's regulated. It's, it's government accounting. A lot of it is just not a lot of flexibility sometimes.
She makes the same faces as you.
All set, Andy? Thanks. Uh, so I just want to note that the advisory committee, education subcommittee is having a meeting tomorrow night as well to, um, to dig into any last questions about the education budget request. But of course, Kristen, you can go next.
Hi, just following up again with, um, Andy and what Bob said. So, if you're saying that you could use that money towards special education, possibly for FY twenty three in case for, you know, people aged out, but that could come back that next year. Um, so you're saying that you can use that for FY twenty three budget?
No, there's a, there's a special reserve, Kristen. It's called the special ed, uh, reserve account. It sits in fund balance, but it's, 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 um, it's, it's that, is, is it unassigned fund balancer or is it accessed?
It's a special fund trust.
Yeah.
That we set up according to, um, the, the special, special legislature that the town meeting voted to go through. So the school committee can, before June thirtieth, if they're going to have a surplus, they can take some of that money and put it into the special ed trust.
Okay.
And it is only to be used for special ed trust emergencies.
Okay, just clarifying that it can't be used for an FY twenty three budget item.
It cannot.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave?
Hi, and Michelle, could I trouble you to throw the, um, forecast back up for just one quick second? Thank you so much. While she's doing that, let me make my daily plea for people to read the Sustainable Budget Task Force report. For those who haven't and anybody who's on the call tonight, um, it's a wonderful piece of work and I think it frames some really important issues that we're addressing tonight. And I, I applaud the zero in FY twenty three, but I would note that that is a necessary but insufficient condition or solution to our problem, which is laid out in twenty four, five, six and seven. So I, I just, I didn't want that to get glossed over and, just want people to pay attention that, you know, when you strip out the fund balance usage and when you strip out the, and by the way, that, I'll talk about this more at ACES tomorrow night, but the fund balance usage is significant, is envisioned to be significant. I know there's been discussion about the fund balance, the magnitude of the unassigned fund balance or excess fund balance. Um, I don't know if we have a slide on that and maybe it's a little bit off topic tonight, but I think, uh, it's important for people to note that in addition to this fund balance allocation to propose to close the budget this year, there's additional fund balance proposed to be used to offset some future capital uh, or cost of debt related to some big capital projects that are near and dear to many people's hearts, um, as well as a couple of other uses, uh, that leave us without, uh, much of a excess fund balance. Uh, and so I think that's to be noted unless anyone think that there's a lot of additional fund balance that's just not being applied to this current, uh, challenge. So, you know, just for uh, simplicity's sake, you're looking at potentially an operating override of five point eight million dollars if FY twenty four played out just as it did, uh, and if we're not going to make any adjustments to service. So, that's the context in which we're looking at the budget, or I should say, let me say it this way. That's the context in which I'm looking at the budget this year. And I think when people talk about additional requests, it's important to look at not just twenty three, but the out years. Um, and I applaud that. And that's to close where I started. That's why I recommend the Sustainable Budget Task Force, which takes a very hard look at that. Takes a very hard look at other revenue options, um, that may be on the horizon. And, um, I really just encourage anybody who is concerned, frustrated, interested, uh, about this budget to read that document as a starting point. So you can, uh, come at it with the best information we have available now. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. George?
Thank you, Julie. Um, yeah, and Michelle, I want to look at this page again, and I just want to pick up, um, where Dave left off and just ask what the, what the expense assumptions are for twenty four, which is with, with, with the five point eight million dollar deficit. You know, and does that include the, um, the positions that at this point are being considered to be off the table, I guess? Um, you know, the twenty three requests and, uh, so maybe you could just, um, just frame that, the expense, um, assumptions in the twenty four year.
Sure. And Sue can correct me if I'm wrong. So because FY twenty three doesn't include any additional requests this year, those are also not reflected in twenty four going forward. I believe we have personnel going up by three percent in FY twenty four and expenses maybe going up by two or two and a half. I'd have to look behind the scenes.
Okay, so no, no new positions in twenty four or twenty three.
That's right.
Is what this budget reflects. I mean, I know, I know we're very early in, in looking at twenty four, but just, you know, trying to get my head around, um, you know, the, the projected deficit at this point. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, George. Do any other advisory committee members have any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Oh, Jabilene?
Yeah, I just want to go back to that excess one point seven million in the school budget. As I understand it, John, and Carrie, between now and the end of the year, you can reallocate that money to fund other things or other needs that you have. So it may be that at the end of the year, you have no excess funds. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jabilene. Nancy?
Thanks, Julie. Um, and thanks, Michelle, for all this data. I, um, I just had a question for John. I, I just, I can't get it clear in my head. Um, there, there's, were a couple, um, citizens that asked why you couldn't hire with that one point seven, particularly the arts director that's top of mind, I think for a lot of folks. Um, and why that art directors, I, I know that you can't delay it until FY twenty three, but is there a reason that you couldn't hire them now?
You know, I, I guess that the, the answer to that, Nancy, and honestly is like, there's no reason why you couldn't hire them except you, I wouldn't put a recurring charge into an operating budget that doesn't have an FTE and, uh, you know, I, I think that the proper way is to go forward and to request it and to get it properly approved within the budget. I mean, realistically, the, the money could be used for anything and you could end up a school system that says, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna hire a dozen people right now. And then they'd be laying off people, you know, in May because they don't have the budget money.
And, and I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this, like I said, but I guess my, my thinking on that is what's the, what's the difference between taking it from that one point seven that you have and based on, based on the numbers that I've seen, it would be less than one percent of that one point seven would go to the, um, hiring that arts director. In fact, it would be a lot less because it wouldn't be a full year. So, um, but what's the difference between that or waiting and taking it out of fund balance next? I mean, at the end of the day, we're looking at trying to use excess funds and, and if there's, they're available now, it seems to me that's.
Right. It's not the, the, the money is, it's, the money's not there for next year. So you wouldn't.
But regardless, it isn't either way, is what I'm saying.
Well, it, it, it isn't there yet. Right. It isn't there yet, but, um, the votes on the budget haven't come forward yet. So either, so the money's not there for next.
No, no, but what I'm saying is even if it gets voted into the budget, there, we just looked at on the forecast, we already have to use fund balance. So that is going to come out of some fund balance is my point. It's, it's coming out of some non-recurring fund is my point. Till we get to FY twenty four and actually do an exercise to get the additional income.
Right, but we each get an appropriation at town meeting. So, I mean, and each department is responsible for not spending anything beyond what their appropriation is. So if we did that and I don't have an appropriation to fund that salary for next year, then I would, I would be over budget and I can't be over budget. We can never be over budget. So, so the, you know, because it's recurring, it just doesn't work.
Yeah, it just, I just wanted to clarify. We could do, we could go and hire an arts director right now, but we'd have to lay them off in July twenty twenty two if we didn't have the money for it. So, uh, that's not really a responsible way to, to budget for the future. At one point seven, we could, we could salary out of that to pay an arts director between now and the next fiscal year, but then going forward, we'd have to find that position too. So that's, that's the predictive amount we're in.
The other thing too, Nancy, is like lots of time, I mean, it's, it's nice. Well, you know, hopefully we get a finance director funded within our budget for twenty three. And then you want to get an advertisement out really early. Because, you know, most people, they, they, the good finance directors, they're already engaged. Um, you know, or, you know, unless you're taking somebody new. So it's, it's not always great to, to be looking for people mid-year. You want to be sort of prepared and get ready to go at the start of the school year.
Anybody else from advisory committee have any questions? Caitlin?
Thanks, Julie. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I, I think Carrie and John answered this, but just to be crystal clear in, in my head. So when you guys were, um, coming up with the forecast for FY twenty three, that like the one point seven million that you're favorable um, for FY twenty two wasn't in your baseline when you were planning your twenty three numbers? Cause I, I guess where I'm getting stuck in my head is if, if that was part of your baseline and it's favorable this year, and I apologize, John, I know you went through some of the reasons why it was favorable, but I, I didn't have a chance to write it down. Is that embedded in your, those same kind of activities embedded in your twenty three assumptions as well?
I'm just trying to make sure I understand the question because the twenty three is the, is, is a buildup of, of a budget. It includes all of the people that are currently, um, you know, in the budget. It includes those, the, the favorable hiring, it includes the, uh, teachers that may have come and, um, and, and left. You know, regarding FTEs, uh, it includes a schedule of tuitions that reflects what we believe tuitions to be, the known tuitions that we know for next year and then transportation. So, so basically it, the, the, the one point seven attrition, you would say, or, or the one point seven, it's, it's, it's already sort of in that budget. Maybe that's why, you know, another, another one of the, another one of the factors why the budget's sitting at one point four three now too, because, you know, the, the cost structure overall has like, you know, declined. So it's one point four three. So basically it's all, everything that's in twenty two is in twenty three. And it's priced accordingly based on what we believe the price is to be and what we know the price is to be based on contract.
Okay. Yeah, it definitely does. It's, yeah, because you did a bottom, bottoms up budget, essentially not like taking last year and trending it for some of these buckets that, so the favorably you're seeing this year isn't, isn't there next year. Okay, got it. Thank you for clarifying that.
None of our budgeting is like last year, just that spread to it. We don't do that. I don't do that at all.
Okay.
We have a lot of detail, a lot of backup sheets. Um, you know, we try to look at every single account. Um, the accounts that we don't, I mean, we even sort of try to schedule out what our supplies are for, you know, schools and, and the equipment that they actually need. What they, what they don't, when they don't have a number for something, we would use inflation and that would happen on a very small amount of the budget. Um, you know, so basic supplies like pins, pencils and stuff, they're not expected to, to itemize those out. So we, we'd use, you know, the inflation factor this year, which is that when I did the budget, uh, back in this October, I used the price deflator index and that was, I think at four point seven percent then. Um, and then, you know, so, but that's, that's on a very small amount of the budget like that. We're lucky if that's on a million dollars of the budget. Um, everything else is attempted to be scheduled out from, from the bottom up.
Great, thank you. That clarified it.
Energy, energy is always a wild card too. Energy would be based on usage and whatever the current price is at the current time or one that we may anticipate. And I mean, I can tell you right now, twenty three, hopefully that's going to get better because we're way above any anticipated rate for twenty three.
Great, thank you so much.
Anybody else from the advisory committee? Okay, Joe, we're all set.
Thank you. Uh, Michelle, could you put up the five year forecast, uh, slide again?
Yep.
And, and I am going to turn the meeting now over to the school committee, Carrie Nie, and just, uh, if you could just scroll up to the top. Michelle, so, cause this, the agenda item here is our five year preliminary forecast. And so, uh, refocusing on that, just asking, uh, the school committee if they have questions or comments on, on the forecast. Turning this over to, uh, to Carrie.
Thank you, Joe. Um, if anyone on the school committee has any questions or comments, could you just use the raise hand function? Liza?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I, I would like to add to this discussion about this one point seven million dollars that last night was the first time that we saw it as well. And also last night was the first time we saw this preliminary forecast that our additional asks were taken out of the budget. So we have, as a school committee, we have a lot to think about. And we've heard from many constituents that they want us to use the funds that the town has given for the schools. I personally would like to work collaboratively with the advisory committee and the select board on identifying how best we can use, um, whatever, if we can move S R funds into fiscal year twenty three, or you, or if we're looking at a fund balance return, can that be applied to the asks that we had for our budget because we were below two percent in our requests. We were very prudent. These were really critical items. And so, um, you know, I was as surprised to see this forecast as all of you were surprised to hear about a one point seven million dollars of potential available funds from the school department budget. And I think we can all work together to do what's best for the town and for our students and our families. Um, so, you know, I just, I wanted to add that to all of you. And I, I guess I also want to, would like to know what's the target date of finalizing this for town meeting? Because, you know, I also recognize we're down to crunch time and we gotta make some fast decisions. So, um, I guess I is advisory voting on Thursday night?
It's on our agenda to vote on Thursday. It's a possibility. And then we have some cushion for. Early next week because we have an other articles to take up early next week as well. So.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so and, you know, hopefully we can have a good discussion tomorrow night with the Aces group, you know. Nancy, thank you for speaking up on behalf of trying to get things done that um. The schools have been asking for and that a lot of families. Want um tonight, there's the all town band concert. Um. You know, prime audience of people that have really been asking for this by arts director. Um, so. The school committee has a lot of work to do very quickly. And on behalf of the whole town, I recognize that if there's available funds that potentially can benefit everyone and we're all in a crunch. Um, I also recognize that looking at the. The uh years going out. Um, it's a big number, but that's something we've been talking about for a long time. And as Dave said, yes, please read the Sustainable Budget Task Force. Because that's the reason that that group was put together. And we should all anticipate an override to accommodate requests for the town and for the schools that people. Want and. You know, expect for keeping services to the levels. Uh, that our citizens want. So thank you for allowing me to comment, but um then and I'm committed to working as fast as possible to determining. How to use the funds appropriately.
Thank you, Liza. Ness?
What? Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, thanks for the presentation and the update on the forecast. Um, I just wanted to go back to something David Anderson had talked about. He had brought up, he brought up the um unassigned fund balance. And I just wanted to remind everybody. Who's on the call, what that means. I think sometimes we are in these meetings and we. The the people who are not here every time don't necessarily know what we're talking about. Um, so it's the financial policy of the town that. Any excess funds every year would go into and and that are not assigned that go into an unassigned fund balance. Um. So our policy is that. It's between sixteen and twenty percent of um total annual expenditures and we are currently over that. I wanted to um and and I know that part of this. Forecast, we're using the one point four eight million. Um, I wanted to get the actual number of. Unassigned fund balance as it is today. I think I remember from the Sustainable Budget Task Force that we were in the twelve million dollar range. Um, but I wanted to see if we could get that number again.
I can look it up real quick. You are right. It's in the twelve million dollar range.
I believe it's in the twelve million dollar range, um Ness and uh and anticipated. Uh, usage is for um right now anyways for offsetting the cost for foster school, uh public safety facility. Uh, tennis courts over at the high school and fire capital projects.
Right, so of that, and then we are going to use a portion of that where we're proposing to use a portion of that unassigned fund balance to plug the hole this year. And and hope that um we can continue to have these discussions on an override that ends up happening. Um, and I would put a plug in, given I was on the committee and we had made the recommendation that. The Sustainable Budget Task Force continue. Um, I think it was an invaluable um. Use of time and I would I would strongly recommend that we continue that work. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Michelle, did you have your hand up?
I did. Sorry, I didn't. Sorry, I did. Um. Sorry, I'll say it now because Michelle was kind enough to unmute me. Um, but it was really just sort of reiterating um what Ness and. Liza were commenting on. And just to say that we all got a lot of late breaking news between the forecast and the um. Potential uh one point seven from the school department. I think um. One thing to clarify, though, I feel like. We're using the word surplus from the school committee budget, but to Daveline's point, it's not necessarily a surplus yet, right? We still got. Almost four months of school left to go before June thirtieth. So so some or or all of those funds um could be used. And I think. To Liza's point, though, um, I think we've got a lot of work to do over the next probably forty eight hours to figure out how can we best utilize. Any funds that we didn't um use this year for whatever reason, for a variety of reasons that we didn't utilize all those funds. How can we best put them to use? On both behalf of our students in town, but also on behalf of the town and figure out a way to get forward so that we can try to. Find a way to fund some of these positions we need for next year as well and take care of all the other needs across the town. So appreciate all the work that. We're all going to be doing over the next forty eight hours. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and and I appreciate the presentation as well and um I've been digesting it since we we received it um as well as the as John's present presentation yesterday. I just I want to reiterate um when it comes to this the the school department additional asks. Um, we did give the superintendent and the business manager the direction to. Only put in things that were crucial structural deficits to running the school, the the school department. Um, these are things that other towns, our size and demographics have um and keep everything running smoothly. Um, are more cost efficient in the long run because they resulted that they, if you're running smoothly and doing things that you're supposed to. You're less likely to get into trouble and to have more costs. So that's kind of why we asked for the things we did. There are a very long list of things we didn't ask for. We felt like it was more responsible. To go through the strategic planning process and kind of map those out and see um and work with the town and see when the best. Times are to do it and also and to look for efficiencies too. So we we were really careful about that. And I just remind everyone that we proposed a one point four three percent budget increase, which is the lowest I've. Seen um since I've been paying attention. Uh, John, did you want to say something? That we can't hear.
Only 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 if you finish, Carrie. I mean, I I can't wait. I just wanted to ask another question about the stabilization. Fund usage. You know, because I I know that, you know, so I mean, I see a couple of years ago, three hundred thousand was used. I don't know if some debt dropped off. And I was just wondering if I know there's two million dollars there and I know we brought it back to the one seventy eight, but. When I sort of read the new regulation. I didn't. I didn't quite um understand if it's totally impossible to sort of match the. Stabilization usage with the debt that's actually used for those particular buildings. Like I'm assuming a couple of the big overrides that may still be here. Um, you know, have to do with these school and 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 the um middle school. And I didn't know if that debt could say, hey, well, as long as we're increasing this and we're paying towards that debt. Whatever that normal balance would be, would that not be a proper use of stabilization fund? You know, just to see I that 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 was just a night a thought that I had.
John, I believe the regulation says you can use it to offset the interest, not the principal.
And the, yeah, and but is the interest amount too? So the interest, we pay regular amounts on principal, but the interest doesn't amount to more than one seventy eight on those two debt instruments?
No, it does not. It's that because it's they're at they're at the 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 end.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and I just wanted to reiterate Dave's and others um suggestion that people read the Sustainable Budget Task Force report. It. Is really excellent work. And specifically, when I talk about structural deficits with the school department. Um, I suggest taking a look at the last paragraph in page thirteen and onto the next page. It gives a it's gives a brief history of why. Um, these these deficits are there. Um, so I I would ask everyone to, if you've read or maybe take another look, or if you haven't, um, read the whole thing because it's great. So I think that's it for the school committee.
Okay, thank you. Um. This may uh. I'll call Eric Valentine. Um, I know that we're up next for the capital outlay, but if you or anyone in your group has questions on the fiscal year twenty three financial forecast.
I know this time.
Great, thank you. Uh, then we can move on to the fiscal year twenty three capital outlay committee recommendations. And Eric, I will return the floor to you.
Great, thanks, Joe.
Um, is there anything that you want uh up on the up on the screen?
Uh, no, I should I I guess I should have uh prepared a PowerPoint or uh something to look at, but um. I guess we haven't typically, so I didn't do it uh this year, but I can make a note to to uh. Include some graphics next year. Um, so uh I just wanted to correct the record that uh Matt Goulet is also uh at com representative participating in the meeting uh this evening that I initially missed. Um, okay, so for fiscal twenty three. Um, our and we thought our any our typical annual review process in which we meet with each uh each of the departments uh requesting capital items. Um, we will discuss in detail all their um. Current requests to understand the nature of 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 each request, the need, uh priority, et cetera. Um, after all the part, after all the department meetings, uh we will meet as a committee and deliberate over which items to fund. Um, with our projected budget for that fiscal year. We use a um. Uh, a presta- a pre-established review criteria. Um, which includes, uh, you know, safety risk, uh, is that a broken is accorded to the department. Uh, just require significant repairs. Um, and we will assign a priority to each of the items, um, either annual one, two or three. Um, annual items are uh recurring capital needs of the departments. Um, some examples are I T asset replacements. Uh, bulletproof vest for the police, fire turnout gear, uh, school technology. And uh, and then there's a priority one, which would be, uh, you know, it's a safety risk that is broken or or it's a core to the department's mission. Um, so so for some fiscal twenty three metrics, um, the total capital requests that we received uh to be funded from the tax levy this year was five point two million. Um, based on our two point seven uh protected budget, we're able to fund approximately uh fifty two percent of those. Um, some notable items are, uh, there's nine hundred and fifteen thousand of annual baseline uh capital expenditures. Um, and then the bounce one point eight um was for, you know, was the priority one items. Some of the priority one items were um seven hundred and twenty two K for the police. Which included three hundred and seventy eight K for seven uh hybrid cruisers. Hundred and forty five K for police dash cams and radios and a hundred and thirty nine K for police body cams. Um, required under the new um. Uh, police union contract. Um, we're uh we're recommending funding uh two hundred and twenty K for uh for the D P W for a new front end loader, which is um. Which was purchased in twenty thirteen. And a hundred and eighty thousand for um I T to replace and upgrade the edge network switches for the entire town excluding the schools. Um, of the two point seven million fiscal twenty three capital funding, uh, we allotted eight hundred and eighty four K or thirty three percent to the school department. Um. And based on one point seven million requested. Um, of the total requests, eleven percent were new or point three million and eighty nine percent were were replacement uh or or for replacements. Um, or two point four million. Um, as I'm sure everyone's aware, the uh the town uh financial uh policy. Um. For capital expenditures expenditures was updated uh to be uh three, you know, three to six percent of the uh fiscal year operating budget. Um, and that was revised from two to five percent. Uh, for fiscal twenty three, based on current estimates, we don't expect the fiscal twenty three capital spending to be uh from the tax levy uh to be within the policy range. Um, and we're at uh two point seven percent of of the operating budget and that's based on a ninety eight point one million um operating budget. Um, which takes me into um. My I guess my annual uh soapbox standard, the capital LA uh needs additional funding. Uh, we continue to defer requests that should be funded, uh, you know, due to limited budget. Uh, our capital back backlog, which is, you know, that out for years uh within our five year plan. Uh, continues to cre- in- increase year over year. So in fiscal nineteen, it was uh fourteen point nine million. And this year it's uh looking to be twenty six point five million. Um, so that's just going to keep growing unless we um figure out a long term solution. Uh, using some of the unassigned fund balance, uh, you know. Might be good for a, you know, a year to plug a gap, but that's not a long term solution um to fund capital and and uh. And in and in that regard, we, you know, we should, we support the sustained budget report recommendations of um assigning the ambulance revenue to uh to fund new uh new ambulance purchases, which. Um, is planned to be every two years. Um, as well as we support, you know, implementing transfer station fees to fund. You know, either specific D P W capital items or uh just overall additional capital item items. And so I guess in conclusion, um, the uh the committee uh has recommended uh capital funding, you know, by source of two point seven million from the tax levy. A hundred and twenty five thousand from the municipal waterways fund for harbor master uh capital items and four point three million. Um. From user rates and fees for the uh country club, uh rec department, sewer department and uh water company. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Okay, Eric, um, thank you. Uh, what I'm going to do is uh have again select board members, then the various committees. And then I'm going to uh open up to the public uh this entire discussion on the uh financial forecast, both um. Uh, capital outlay as well as the uh the financial forecast update that we previously covered. Uh, so I will start. Uh. With uh Michelle, any questions? I'm sorry, not Michelle. Liz, any any questions on the um capital outlay? Presentation.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Eric. Um, I know that there. Are a lot of deferred items here. Can you give us a sense of how? How long some of these items have been on the list? I know I I'm pretty sure it's more than five years. So can you just give us a sense of that?
Um. Well, I'm not I'm not sure anything gets deferred more than five years, but a good example is the D P W. They, you know, a lot of their. Um. Randy Sylvester has a schedule with all the equipment of D P W and. You know. Oh, you know. A greater portion than the, you know, than I think the town's food would would like are, you know, well beyond their useful life. You know, ten, twelve, fourteen years of uh a lot of the trucks and um heavy equipment. And so. Um, for example, the Randy requested one point one million of capital requests this year and we were only able to fund two hundred and twenty thousand.
Right. Okay, thank you. Um, one thing related to the the police, the um the body wear cameras. I I know at one point we had talked about um. Using grant money or applying for a grant.
Yeah, so um the chief uh, you know, is planning to um. You know, apply for the grant if he hasn't already and um, you know, hopefully have a a the grant a hundred percent fund that. And if um, you know, if that is successful, then um we will repurpose those uh those funds for the body cameras of a hundred and thirty nine K to to other capital items.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work on this. I know it's not easy.
Liz, just I can help answer some of that last question just real quick. The um. The police department, the application window opens in April uh for the body cams and uh and Chief Jones is certainly um prepared to submit the application for full funding.
Great, thank you.
Bill? Ramsey, are you there?
Thanks, Joe. I was unmuted. Um. Uh, Eric, thank you for your uh presentation. I appreciate the committee's work. My only uh point was to follow up on Liz's question um was, and that is the chief, I. Uh, was pretty confident we're going to get fully funded for the uh body camera. So hopefully that number will come off of the budget here, but thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the uh, yeah, that's what the, you know, chiefs, you know, communicated to us, but. Because it was in the 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 new police uh union contract, we didn't want to not fund it. In in the event that the, you know, the grant funding didn't come through.
Sure, understood. Thanks, Eric.
Great. Um. Eric, this is uh. Directly related to capital expenditures and it may be beyond. Your committee's um information, but. Often there are. Um, entities engaging in capital replacement work. Um. In order to bring down the cost of repair. Um. And, you know, obviously, you know, a new vehicle, you don't have to repair as much as an older. Um, do you have any sense uh to what extent? Our operating budget is adversely affected by deferred capital?
I mean, not not holistically. So the, you know, when the when a department is, you know, submitting a capital request, they will outline the, you know, the history of the vehicle and say, okay, there's been a thousand dollars of repairs on this vehicle or five thousand dollars in of repairs in this vehicle. But but, you know, as far as an entire operating budget impacts, we don't have that visibility.
I'm really just picking up on on Liz's point that, to the extent that we've had deferred items, our inability to move forward with a capital plan, I suspect has had an adverse impact impact on our operating budget. And that there isn't a a relationship, and the sooner we can get our hands around the moving forward with the capital plan, the better off the town will be from an operational standpoint. With that, I will turn it over to the advisory committee and Julie.
Thanks, Joe. Michelle, can you pull up the spreadsheet again and scroll to the bottom where the footnotes are?
Tell me when to stop or when to go.
Go up a little bit more.
Go down a little more.
Oh, sorry. I'm looking for it. Well, actually, I'll just ask the question. It's here in footnote number two. So Eric, can you just explain advisory committee check up the article for fire department capital, large capital needs, but if you can just explain for everyone the situation where there are many, many asks that the fire department needed to have fulfilled and what that budget was compared to your whole capital outlay budget.
Oh, yeah, so I think ahead, I think all these all these items, you know, individual items, you know, being potentially funded through a warrant article, you know, we're on the on prior year of capital plans. And they they're, you know, they're just so large, you know, seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars for a new pumper truck. You know, as a third of our budget. And so we just don't have the ability to fund, you know, significantly large items like that with our two point seven, you know, for fiscal twenty-three capital budget. And so, you know, as welcome news, when this warrant article was proposed to bundle these these large items for the fire department as well as, you know, we have much needed repairs for for station one and station three. You know, the pictures we've seen that the the chief has provided and the and the details of the of the situation, especially station one, you know, made it evident that, you know, these these repairs were, you know, critical and needed.
Thanks, Eric. And the the funding source for that article is on a sign fund balance. Nancy?
Okay, so there won't be a warrant article for that?
No, it is a warrant article.
Okay, but from.
Yeah. Nancy?
I and Eric, if you want me to take this offline, I totally appreciate that. You made a comment that that you support the having a transfer station fee. And I'm trying to understand, since presumably every household in town would use a uses the DPW. How how is the fee that would be applied evenly across the whole town? Why is that? Why would? And this is just, I'm just truly trying to understand. Why is that preferable to just folding it into a larger capital outlay budget?
Well, no, I mean, I think that that's, I mean, my point was that that could be a potential new revenue or funding source that could be used for capital items. And and so I don't know, I think it's it'd be more palatable for the townspeople to, you know, I think, oh, I'm no expert on this, but it seems like, you know, most surrounding towns have a like a pay as you throw or, you know, you have to pay for at least one, you know, dump transfer station sticker. And so so if, you know, in the example that, you know, we do a transfer, some type of transfer station fee to fund the transfer station capital capital items that would directly align with the users. And, you know, I would say not everybody is a is probably a large percentage does not use the transfer station. I've heard there's thirty independent trash companies in town. So that would directly align with with the users.
Okay, I didn't realize it was thirty percent, and I thought I thought.
Thirty percent, thirty companies.
Do they? Right. And I thought didn't don't they? I've seen the one guy at the dump doesn't, don't they use the services of?
Oh, maybe they do. I don't know.
All right. Take this offline. Thank you.
Andy?
Question on fund balance. At at one point, Michelle, I think you presented the budget, you made a budget presentation to us that that included a slide which showed the suggested fund balance expenditures, including the money for the to offset the the foster and to offset the public safety facility. You don't happen to have that slide handy, do you?
I have a spreadsheet. I can pull that up.
Okay. Or or alternatively, I guess, while you're doing that, let me try to ask my question. If I recall that slide correctly, and it ended up with a a bottom line of one point nine million remaining in excess fund balance. Is that?
You could talk about this.
Yes, yes, precisely. Is that still a number? Or has that been reduced by the use in the to offset some of the operating expenses in the zeroed out budget you presented tonight?
Michelle, do you want me to take that?
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
So Andy, it's a great question. We were talking about this today. I think two things are important to remember. One is the reason we were leaving two million dollars in excess fund balance in the account is because that is the ten year average of fund balance used at town meeting, whether it's for reserve fund transfers or or articles, etc., that that go beyond the the capital budget or other things. So that was why we wanted to leave two two million dollars in excess fund balance in there. And where we're now using one point five million from fund balance to balance to end ultimately to balance the budget. Our thought was that we would apply, we would remake this chart to lower the amount being used to offset foster and public safety. By that, in the amount equal to that one point five.
So to to be able to maintain the two million dollar reserve that you anticipate will will be expended. Okay. All right, I I was I was going to suggest that that be given to the capital outlay committee, but I won't because Sue's on the line.
Y'all said, Andy? David Lee?
Yeah, I just want to say as as the one of the two AdCom members of Capital Outlay. First, I just want to thank Eric for a tremendous amount of work he does as chair. And I I think people, I mean, this handout should show that and all of these notes. And I also want to note that our our overall capital spending is more than just our our two point seven because we have these major capital projects. But I will say this is now, I guess I've been on Capital Outlay for about two and a half years, almost three. It is really sad to see the number of requests we have that are valid, important, needed requests that we can't, we simply can't fund. And there are particularly certain kinds of of requests that are harder to fund, you know, some of the things that might relate, for example, to preservation of a town owned historic building. If you're comparing that against, you know, body vests for the police or something like that. I mean, it's just really hard decisions because there's just not enough money there. And I think in the long run, we do pay a price by deferring things. And I also want to give a shout out to many of the town departments that simply come in knowing they're not going to get everything they request. And so they have prioritized, you know, this, this, we really have to have this, we could wait a year on this, we could wait a year on that. And it doesn't seem like that's the best position to put our department heads in. So I do hope as we continue, we can have more capital outlay. And certainly, and you see it in the school budget for capital requests as well, usually the school request would also equal our budget. So there's, you know, it's just, it's a very tough, very tough decision. So I just want to give thanks to the committees and also to the department heads. That's it.
Thanks, David Lee. Great points. Anyone else from advisory committee have any questions for capital outlay? Okay. We're all set.
Thank you, Julie. Before I go to the school committee, I saw Steve Murphy turn on his camera and it looked like he was going to make a comment. So Chief Murphy, if you're there, if there was something that you wanted to add, now's your chance.
No, I was just going to comment on the that article for the fire department in the needs, but the question was answered. So thank you.
Great, thanks. School committee, Carrie D.
Thanks, Joe, and thank you, Eric, and to Capital Outlay. That's a tremendous amount of work and and you really did have to make some tough decisions. So we really appreciate all you're doing for the town. Does anyone on the school committee have any questions for Capital Outlay? If you'd use the raised hand. Liza?
Okay. Yeah, I just want to thank Eric for his work. And I certainly hope that when we address all the override issues that capital is taken into consideration and the overall vision of how we're moving forward because every year I've been serving. This is a repetitive issue. And I hope that we can consider this with every other ask that people have been looking at and what the Sustainable Budget Task Force, how they covered this too in their report. So thank you, Eric, for all your work and your whole committee.
Welcome.
Yeah, thanks, Carrie. I wanted to also say thanks to Eric. I mean, Himmern is the team and David Lee and Matt, they they work incredibly hard. And I know, you know, we go through these three hour meetings and we explain, you know, all the all of the things that we need for, you know, to to maintain ten buildings and to do the the major repairs that are necessary. So we keep them in shape and we're not always in in the process of saying, hey, you know, five years down the road, we're going to need a new building here. I really do believe that, you know, we need a, we need a good capital plan going forward. One that's going to be adequate funding to take care of all the assets that we have really in town. I mean, and there's, this is not a complaint, but I just as a point of reference, so I can kind of explain it to everybody here. Because this is where all the decision makers are. This is where all the people are that guide this town. There's, you know, the school budget of eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars to maintain ten buildings or, you know, nine buildings, ten buildings, you know, building twelve is out of commission. So we're not doing anything on building twelve anymore. We just hope that it doesn't fall down at some point. But so net net, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. I know we got the tennis courts, which which is good, but that was a joint article. And, you know, and there's money in there. When you see the million, you're seeing that there's a PRS revoke from last year. And there's some interim funding for foster that's absolutely necessary so we keep that project on pace. And and I know the school committee as well as the building committee, we all appreciate that investment that we make into those buildings. But from a maintenance and an annual year by year perspective, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, four hundred and forty-eight six thousand, four four hundred and eighty-six thousand of that is technology in the schools. That gets used and expended every year. That's the recurring charge that isn't capital. So I mean, net net, I end up with three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars to try to do major capital repairs on ten buildings. It's not a lot of money. You know, we we really, as a town, we will, we really need to create a focus and get a good capital process and give capital outlay appropriate funding to 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 address what we need in the town. And thank you. And thanks, Eric, and the folks for doing everything. I appreciate it.
Excellent. You know, I would, yeah, I would reiterate that, you know, strategic or, you know, capital, you know, townwide capital plan that identifies all assets and, you know, their useful lives and the, you know, do the lifecycle cost analysis and just something that, you know, is all encompassing it so that, you know, the town is able to plan and say, oh, okay, it's not a surprise. You know, million dollar expenditure that needs to be done this year. It can be planned out and, you know, significant repairs can be avoided.
And thank you. That's a really good point from both of you. Does anyone else have any questions for the school committee? I'm not seeing any. So thank you again.
Thank you. And Eric, thank, thank, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome. Just I just like to say thanks for all the kind accolades, but, you know, that acknowledges the rest of the committee. It's a team effort and so couldn't do without them. So thank you, guys.
So at this point, we are on, we're still on item six on our agenda, and I am going to open up for public comments. And that's public comments on the fiscal year twenty-three financial forecast as well as the financial, the fiscal year twenty-three capital outlay committee recommendations. So if there are members of the public who've got questions, please raise your hand and begin by giving us your name and address. And I see immediately John Borger. So you have the floor.
Thank you. John Borger, fifty-three Lafayette Avenue. It's obvious you folks are wrestling with hellish issues, so we in Higginnet Zero salute you. There's a wonderful Latin saying by the gladiators, something to the effect that we were about to die, salute you. And this is a tough, this is a tough nut to crack. Many of our members are also at the All Town Band Concert. But we were asked, if possible, to get a sense of what the process and the timelines are from this point to arrive at the quote final budget that will be presented in this warrant article. And we understand from the the FY twenty-three forecast tonight that the budget currently is balanced. There's zero deficit, which means that the additional positions that came from a variety of of sectors, including the sustainability positions, the sustainability coordinator and the grant writer are not in there correct right now. I I think that's correct. So my question is, will there be further discussions between the AdCom and the Select Board? Or at this point, as it seems from the agendas that we're looking at for for the balance of meeting times tonight and and on Thursday and maybe next week, are they're basically going to unfold separate discussions? And of course, the AdCom presumably being this dispositive. The reason I ask is that our members would like to know that, would like to participate appropriately. And, you know, what we want to help them try to navigate through the process at this point. So if you could speak to briefly process going forward in timeframes, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Great. Tom, do you want to review the process?
Sure, thank you, Joe. So thanks for the question, John, as usual, a well thought through question. What we're what we're looking at, I think, tonight is the Select Board will be discussing article. Well, right now it's Article F. It will soon become Article Six. And then in that discussion, they will we'll see what they do, but there will be a discussion about what the appropriate way to fund the budget is going forward. Again, Michelle and I have put together a path toward towards a balanced budget. And that will be discussed by the Select Board tonight, possibly voted. possibly voted and then sent to the advisory committee for their in-depth discussion. As I think we heard Julie Straley discuss, say earlier, ACES has a meeting, I think, scheduled for tomorrow. And then they're taking up the budget discussion on Thursday. So hypothetically, if the AdCom decided to vote that on Thursday, then, and it was in any way different than what the Select Board votes, if they do tonight, then, then my guess is the Select Board would, would either not reconsider or reconsider at a future meeting, which would likely be the fifteenth. Did I have enough qualifiers in there, Joe?
Yeah, yes.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was absolutely crystal clear.
Right. But I, but just to add to that, John, and just to be clear, so what we've heard so far is the financial forecast, not the budget. It's been characterized in discussions as the budget that the, we will get to the budget when we reach item eight on our agenda. Right now, we, we have the financial forecast that, that Tom's presented. And so there will be further discussions on the budget this evening. And then as, as Tom said, it, it moves forward to the advisory committee.
Okay. Great. Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Could I add to that, please? The advisory committee will have its own budget discussion tonight. But we will not be taking up the full bar budget article until Thursday night. We'll have discussion and then we'll take up Article Six and we'd like to vote the budget that night, but we might not vote the budget that night. And if so, then we would defer it to next Tuesday and we would try to vote the budget next Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other members of the public with questions? I see no further hands raised. Michelle or Tom, do you?
I do not know.
Okay. So at this point, I think we have now concluded our number six agenda item. And I'll ask the school committee if you are prepared to adjourn your committee at this point.
Yes, we are. Somebody like to make a motion to adjourn. I think we have to unmute the school committee.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Ness. All in favor? Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos? I don't know if Carlos is still on. Liza?
Aye.
Carlos, could you unmute yourself, please? Okay, I guess Carlos is abstaining. So okay, so the, the meeting, the school committee is adjourned.
Thank you. And then Capital Outlay. Eric, I don't, I'm not sure. Did you formally convene? I think you did.
Yep, yeah, we did. So raise a motion to adjourn Capital Outlay Committee meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Before we vote, there should be a second.
Second, Eric.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. David Lane, aye.
My guy.
It's eight thirty-six. The Capital Outlay Committee is adjourned.
Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is, and we are still with the advisory committee, to consider Article GG, which is the real estate transfer fee. And it's my intention that we have a, a discussion about that. We have had, I know I've had individual discussions with various members of the advisory committee and members of the public. I suspect that my fellow board members have had their discussions. There has been a lot of back and forth, really good ideas. I'm just going to preface our discussion with my observation that at this point, I don't think the this amendment or this proposal is ready for prime time. I think it needs further discussion, review, refinement. So that what we come up with is something that works best for the town and has the greatest likelihood of being accepted by the state legislature as, as we move forward. So I, I want to move forward with this discussion, but with that as a preface that it was, it's my expectation that after the discussion, we will likely not move forward with Article GG and put that on, on the burner for next town meeting, not, not the upcoming one. So I'm just going to begin by talking to Liz and Bill about your thoughts on Article GG. And I'll, Bill, I'll start with you.
Yeah, so Joe, thank you for that. You know, I would agree with that. I, I think I would applaud the, the task force for bringing the discussion forward. And I think we had a good discussion on last week. I did watch the advisory committee meeting last week on it. I, I heard some great points mentioned by the committee members. But I would agree with you. I think it's good that this needs to be socialized a little more. I'm interested in hearing more comments tonight. I think this will benefit from it being socialized through our, through our community. But also I'm interested to see as this legislation makes its way through the legislature, how other, how it takes shapes in other communities and how other communities adopt it. I mean, we know the legislation exists in Nantucket. We know how Nantucket has implemented it. It's a one percent fee. Sorry, it's a two percent fee borne by the, the buyer and it goes directly toward open space. We know that there's a, there is legislation coming, you know, from Boston that's going to go directly toward affordable housing. Some other communities have other suggestions. So I think we as a community will benefit to see how other towns or municipalities implement it. So it's a good start to this discussion. I would emphasize the point that our board made that we knew, we need to look at additional funding sources other than the levy to fund a lot of the, the capital needs we have in this town. And I think this is one of several ideas that we're going to be talking about over the, over the next year and future years. But it's a good discussion to have and I look forward to hearing the comments of our colleagues tonight. So thank you.
Great. Liz?
Thank you, Joe, and thank you, Bill. I think if, if there's one message I heard loud and clear tonight is we need additional revenue. So I, I hope that people have an open mind about what that looks like. Certainly as it relates to capital projects. I think we're all feeling that we need, we need additional revenue sources. I have been very impressed with the, the level of engagement around this, this proposal. I have appreciated hearing people's comments and opinions and feedback. I also listened to the AdCom meeting. And, you know, it was, it was great to hear all the different perspectives. I've also spoken with a Realtor in town as well as select board members in our surrounding communities. So I think there, there's more work to be done there to understand exactly how it impacts our taxpayers, the commercial base, as well as, you know, if we're going to kind of go, try to go forward with a regional approach, what, what our surrounding communities are doing. So I, I do want this to continue to be studied in earnest. I think it was a, a great recommendation that the Sustainable Budget Task Force put forth. So I would like to see that, that work continue and, you know, over the next few months and, you know, have it be considered seriously by the community. Cause I do think there's some good potential there.
Liz, I, I would echo the point that there is a need for funds. There's no question about it. And the task force identified this. I know there was input from the public suggesting this. The issues that at least I've identified is if we're having the transfer fee, on whom is it assessed? Is it the buyer, the seller, some combination? Is it residential, commercial, both? And what percentage? And should it be the same percentage for residential and commercial? How should the funds be applied? Affordable housing, which is, there's currently pending a statewide legislative bill that would have this sort of fee applied to for affordable housing should be used for environmental improvement purposes, capital expenditures. So, you know, there, there are a number of questions. The discussion at the advisory committee opened up a lot of issues. And I think the next step is for the town to assess what is in our best interests. And also recognizing that once we approve it, it requires legislative approval. And then once it has that legislative approval, it will be difficult for us to amend it. So this is not like we, the, the Select Board or town meeting votes something and if it doesn't work out well, we can just adjust it a little bit. It may be locked in place by legislative action at the state level. So we really want to make sure we get this right. But it is something that is definitely worth pursuing. And with that, I would like to turn this over to the advisory committee. Julie, if you have members of your committee who have comments, questions, suggestions on how to proceed with respect to Article GG.
Thanks, Joe. Bob?
We can't hear you, Bob.
Okay.
There we go.
Thanks, Julie. Thanks, thanks, Joe, and, and Bill and Liz. I couldn't agree more with the idea that we need more revenue in the town. And I think everybody on the advisory committee agrees with that. I think the best way to get that additional revenue is, is not with something like Article GG. But it is through a comprehensive and thoughtful override that is going to increase the tax levy. And it's going to basically increase it for almost everyone. It would increase it more for people with properties that are assessed higher. And for properties that are subject to the exemptions from the tax levy, all of which I think are good. They would pay less. So it's, it's not actually a progressive system. But I think it's better than this proposal. I certainly agreed with the exemption part of this proposal. I, I had circulated to all of you this evening as a handout a couple of pages of comments that I sent to Kristen earlier today. And they, they come out of a lot of thought and discussion. I had a very productive exchange of ideas with Tom Mayo on Monday. I spoke to Alyssa Tully at length also on Monday about this article. So I, I don't necessarily want to extend the night for everybody by reading through what you can already read through, but perhaps it would be beneficial for at least me to go through the basic points that I'd like to make. And I, I'm seeing this as an unfair tax on a small subset of people. And especially on people that are not presently members of our Hingham community. And I, I think about a young family desiring to move to Hingham. That finally cobbles together the two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy the now million dollar starter home in, in Hingham. And they're basically being asked to pay the equivalent of two months of property taxes on that purchase. An extra five thousand dollars that nobody else has ever paid in, in the town of Hingham for the privilege of moving to Hingham. I expect that many of those young families aren't even going to realize at the time they sign a purchase and sale agreement that such a a tax is going to be imposed on them. And I, I do see this as a tax, not a fee. These are typically related directly to services such as a transfer station or, or my personal favorite greens feeds. But the privilege of living in Hingham is, is not a service. I'd like to say that it would be great for almost anybody to live in Hingham. So I, I think my fundamental objection of this is, is that it's unfair and it, it doesn't broad, in a broad based manner, share the burden that we're trying to address. And I, I think that in Hingham, we have always been our best when we have stood together collectively. So I, I synthesized some of that. I, you know, at the AdCom meeting last week, it was suggested, well, the young family can amortize the 5K over 20 years to reduce the pain. But if you think about it, they're losing the opportunity cost of the five thousand dollars. Plus they're also paying interest on it. I, I looked up today an amortization schedule that indicated that at four percent over 20 years, they'd pay another twenty-three hundred dollars. Wouldn't it be much better for that young family to put that money in a college fund? And in, in talking with Alyssa Tully yesterday, she told me that part of the genesis of this idea was that the folks who sold Broadco made a hundred million dollars profit. And, and the town didn't get to share in that profit. But the more I thought about that, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong about this, but it seems to me that the developers have added a hundred million dollars of value to the real estate tax base. And that, that additional hundred million dollars of value to the tax base is going to generate higher property taxes year after year after year. So I, I while I'm somewhat receptive to the idea of maybe this is a, a tax that could be imposed on businesses. I, I think that that requires very careful study of the consequences and potentially the unintended consequences of, of that type of tax. I recognize that Hingham has the right to tax businesses at a higher rate than individuals. And I think that part of the future study should think about if we really want to go in this direction, and I don't think we do, whether some combination of business and residential with different rates should be involved. I, I, I have said to everybody that I've talked about with this. You know, if, if this kind of fee or taxes to be assessed, I, I'm the one that ought to be taxed. I mean, I, I've lived in Hingham for over 40 years. I, I've had all the benefits. I, my, my property values have increased unbelievably. I recognize that you know, in the sustainability, sustainable budget task force, that I have been under taxed vis a vis our benchmark communities. And to the extent that we haven't invested in capital, as I wish we would have in the past. I'm also a beneficiary of the lack of that capital investment. So I, I think there's something to be said about people that have had the benefits and, and the wealth generation that has generally been involved in, in living in Hingham. Maybe they're the ones that should bear the burden or at least share the burden of any such new revenue source. new revenue source. And I, I do think that any proposed legislation should include a mandatory disclosure provision to buyers or sellers or whoever is going to bear the burden of this tax. So that they can enter into meaningful financial negotiations. If they don't know about the tax, they certainly can't negotiate it into the price. Or maybe even more importantly, into their financing. If they do know about the tax, the sales price is going to go up. And then the property taxes is going to go up and effectively you have a tax on a tax. So I, I think I've covered most of what I wanted to say. I tried to make it succinct. And I'll be delighted to hear the rest of the discussion. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. And Kristen, I'd like to actually just point out Kristen's hard work on this article, which for this town meeting will be all for not, but I just wanted to thank her for sticking with this article and, and learning all the different twists and turns as we've gone in the way. So, thank you, Kristen.
Thanks, Julie. I just want to start off by saying I agree with Bob that, you know, an override is inevitable and is going to help our community, but again, there's no guarantee that that's going to pass at a town meeting, so we can't rely on something like that. And we also still need to look at revenue streams coming in. And this is one of the biggest revenue streams that the Sustainable Task Force looked at that could actually generate money for this town. So, you know, I had the privilege of sitting in on all of those meetings where they went through all the possibilities of the town generating money, and this was the biggest one. And I just think people really need to think about it. You know, people look at the override and they say it's going to hurt low income, it's going to hurt the elderly. And then now people look at this and say, oh, this is going to hurt, you know, incoming families and so forth, middle class. But any type of fee tax is going to have an effect on some sort of group in the town. And that's just something that we're just going to have to deal with as a town, you know. Every year, we're coming up short and different groups are asking for more and want more from the town, but we can't pay for it. So we need to look at these hard decisions and say, yeah, it's going to cost some money, but this is where we're going to get our money from. So just want people to think about it that way too. That we're short with money, you know, like you can't emphasize that enough. And although I agree that, you know, it's not the right time for this yet, there's a lot of different pieces that we need to look at further and assess and get to a better place with this article, you know, possibly next year, but it's, it's a revenue stream that we could lock into. So I just want people to continue to think about that going forward.
Thanks, Kristen. Andy?
Thank you. I, I agree with virtually everything Bob said, except his ante penultimate, penultimate point, which was that there should be a solid tax and that he thinks those of us who have seen an increase in the value of our homes are should be paying more in taxes and that we have been under taxed. I, I want to register my disagreement with Bob's sentiment on that. On a more serious note, I just want to add three or four additional points. I will conclude by saying it is highly important to me that we do have a study of the potential consequences on both the residential side and the commercial side. That, that is going to be my bottom line here. I will use the phrase taxation without representation because with regard to young families who have not moved into the town, they're obviously not going to be at the town meeting that votes for this proposal, but they're going to be the, the recipients of a large tax bill when they, when they are welcome to Hingham. Hardly a, a very endearing welcome to town. So, and, and, and to reemphasize the point that Bob made, you have a very, very small subset of, I think in the Sustainable Budget Task Force report to his suggestion of maybe four hundred people paying additional two million dollars to support the entire services for the entire town. Or capital improvements for the entire town. And that, that is not something that Hingham has ever done or, or I think we ever want to do to, to select such a small group of unrepresented potential homeowners to pay the cost for benefits to be shared by the entire town. The eight towns that are cited in the draft comment to this article include Provincetown, Intucket and Chatham, which of course are places where many people have large second homes. So I would exclude them. The, the five others, Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, Brookline and Arlington obviously much larger than, than Hingham and at least with respect to Boston, Cambridge, Somerville and Brookline have much more substantial commercial development than, than Hingham does. I, I believe the, of the eight towns, the only one that we see on our list of non-benchmark towns, pardon the expression, is Concord. Population about eighteen thousand, I think. And I would add to that, it's, it's not clear to me at all where the legis, the general legislation on this is going to end up. I know it, it it has to be special legislation as it stands now on a town by town basis, but I, I think some of these communities, including Boston, have submitted proposed legislation that has been stalled in the legislature. And, and I suspect that it's going to be very hard and, and hard, hard fought because of the size of the developers in the city of Boston and their potential opposition to this. And my, my final point is one that is, is sort of a, a two-pronged one. I believe I was told by a person who, who is in a position to know that real estate, residential real estate prices in Hingham increased twenty eight percent from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. There, many homes, of course, are going for over the asking price. The attempt to negotiate something like this is, is non-existent, I think, in the current market. And I think that is that is all I have to add to what Bob has previously said. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Excuse me. Sarah?
Thanks. I really appreciate the work to put this forward and to identify it as, as a potential additional revenue source. I really appreciate thinking out of the box on that. When we had our discussion about it the other night, I, I, I very much heard the equity concerns about putting it on buyers and, you know, not all of whom, but many of whom might be young families trying to move into town. And, you know, I was, I was thinking about that quite a bit. And then further on that night on a, you know, different topic, I don't know, it was the forecast or something else in, in, as part of the same meeting, we were talking about potentially, you know, looking at sources like raising athletic fees or fees to use school bus transportation. And, and that struck me as a, a little bit of a dissonance for me in that I, I think there are equity issues that can be addressed in putting an art, Article GG forward, not, not this year, whatever it's called next year. Like you say, deciding between buyer and seller, how that's allocated. Or I don't know if the exclusion amount on the purchase price. It, I forget if that was set by, by a statute or it was tied to some metric, as I recall. So I don't know how much save we would have in moving that number, but you know, excluding five hundred thousand dollars from the application of this entirely, it, it does help with, with the equitable argument. And I think when you stack it against other measures on the table as drastic as raising athletic fees on, you know, high school parents who are desperately trying to save for college and, and school bus user fees on, on families all across the income spectrum. Many of whom, you know, working fit, two parent working families have to use that. That's where I think I really appreciate looking at all the sources and, and, and thinking more about, about implementing this the right way. And that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Dave?
Thanks, Julie. I just want to echo Kristen's comments. I think she said it really well, and maybe she and I are both cursed with having spent a lot of time in the Sustainable Budget Task Force meetings. But it, I, I think she said it better than I can. And I would just say that two things. Number one, I think we ask young parents with young kids to pay for a portion of kindergarten right now in this town. So I think when we start talking about where some of these expenses are visited, we ought to work comprehensively across that as well. I would say that we should absolutely consider a look at this. I, I, you know, I respect where Andy and Bob are coming from. I think they raise excellent points and, and I have my own questions about this in the big picture. But I certainly think, looking at the landscape of potential revenue opportunities, you know, if we start just whacking them away, we're not going to be left with but one. And, and that's okay. And, but I think Kristen is right to point out that if we put all our eggs in that basket and it doesn't work out, we're back to square one. So I would just say, you know, it's, I, I'm not making a request of the select board or Tom or anybody, but I do hope, I imagine, I know Thomas is interested in looking at this more or has expressed that in, in public meetings. And so hopefully this does continue to get some exploration because I think it's worth seeing it to the conclusion and, and really testing some of these hypotheses. Thanks.
Thanks, Dave. Brenda?
Hi, thank you. Um, just a couple of things that we brought up in our AdCom meeting that haven't been said tonight that I think should be said to the larger group, which is it does seem that the new family moving to town are the people who are going to get the most benefit from capital investment from the funds that they end up contributing to the town through the fee. So I think that should be paid attention to. And also that in terms of the equity issues, as I re-learned my math again, the way the metric is set up is the median house price. That eighty percent of that will be the amount that can be deducted from what one would be responsible for the fee for. So that means that in town right now, there are more than fifty percent of our houses that are valued less than eight hundred thousand dollars and that only the difference between the five hundred and something and seven hundred and something is the part that a family would be responsible for. So that's like two thousand dollars. And I think most young families and, and new people moving to town will be making decisions like, do we buy new furniture for this new house? Or do we simply put all of our money into getting the house and then slowly furnishing things? So I think the amount of money is potentially reasonable. And I do think that we have to keep looking at what are the sources of potential revenue and how can we spread those costs across the town? This is one small bit for one group of people, but a fairly invested group of people for wanting to get good things out of the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda. Does anyone else want to add their thoughts about GG or ask any questions? Okay.
And this is exactly the kind of discussion that we were hoping to have to really hear the views of on both sides, or, or it's not just both on various sides, so that we can craft something for consideration at an upcoming meeting and get your comments. And at that point, we'll figure out if it makes sense to forward or not. I, I'd like though to hear comments and questions from members of the public. So if there's any member of the public who wants to talk about what we have currently proposed as Article GG, which is a proposed transfer fee, which would be assessed on transactions that were in excess of, or the portion of the transaction that's in excess of eighty percent of the median value of a home. And I see Mary Power.
Hi, Mary Power, One King Philip Path. Thanks so much for a very good discussion. While I agree with Joe with what you're suggesting, which is that this article is not necessarily ready for this year's town meeting. I think that's the right decision because you want an article to go to town meeting when it's able to put its best foot forward. And it feels like there are still too many open questions. But just listening to the discussion that has taken place since this meeting started between the five-year forecast and what looks to be a starting point of an override next year of five point eight million dollars. With a desire to appropriately add more money into capital. With the fact that we are going to reduce the amount of money being used for tax relief for the capital projects this fall. What that's going to translate to is if there is an override in FY twenty four, between FY twenty four and FY twenty six, Hingham taxpayers will be asked to absorb what as I'm calculating is between a thirty and a forty percent tax increase within a three-year period. And I think that's going to be a very difficult thing for many households to swallow. I would urge the select board to continue to keep this conversation going. Because it, it is an option that is definitely worth pursuing for all the reasons mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public? I am seeing none on my screen. So I'm going to turn back to Liz and Bill for your final thoughts on on what you're, how you're feeling about moving forward with Article GG, either for this upcoming town meeting or for future meetings. I'll start with Liz.
Thanks, Joe. And thank you, everyone, for the feedback. I certainly appreciate it. And Kristen, thank you for your work studying this. It, it certainly is not wasted effort. I, I think we need to continue studying it. So that will be a, you know, a, a starting point for us. I agree that there are more, there's more studying to be done. There are more questions to be answered. So I don't feel comfortable moving it forward for this town meeting. I do want to study it again in earnest, not put it on the back burner for next March, to actually study it consistently over the next several months, because I do think it's an important, it can be an important tool for us. I've heard some discussion about this as a revenue source versus the override. I don't think it's one or the other. I think we need to be thinking about a comprehensive strategy that uses multiple tools. There's going to need to be an override and there's going to be, there, there needs to be other revenue sources. We cannot sus, unless we do an override every year, this budget is not sustainable. That, that's, that should be the key takeaway. So there are multiple things that need to happen here. Whether it's the real estate transfer fee or other sources of revenue in addition to an override. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Bill?
Kristen, thank you for your work on the articles. Well, appreciate that. And I appreciate the comments of our AdCom colleagues very much. So yeah, my position has not changed. I do think we should, we should wait on this one and it should be studied further, at further discussion. But my other position that, you know, we are as, as a select board, we are trying to come up with alternatives to raising property taxes in this town is an important position that we are taking. And this is one position where we are going Uh is an important um position that we are taking, and this is one um position where we uh are going to continue to have. Um you know, I remember a couple of years ago. At town meeting, we had a discussion about the meals tax, and I know this is a much more complicated. Tax than the meals tax discussion, but you know, at at that town meeting. Um everybody talked about the restaurant industry was going to collapse in town because we were gonna. Put uh seventy-five cent tax on, you know, um meals in this town, and guess what? They did it. People don't even know it's on the bill. And the restaurants are doing extremely well in this town, and hopefully, as we see other communities. Uh de- develop this uh this concept and um years from now, we become more com- more comfortable as a community with this. I do think this can be a a good source of revenue for us, but it's desperately needed. And we have capital needs in this community that we're not even discussing. We're gonna ask taxpayers in the fall for a hundred and fifty million dollars in capital needs. For a public safety building that we desperately need, for a foster school that is falling down. We're not even talking about the salt thing and fire station yet. We're not even talking about more school uh needs that we have. We are trying to save property tax increases coming down the road. Mary pointed out. Um uh major override is coming in the fall. So please work with us going forward. We're going to continue the discussion, but thank you for the comments tonight.
Thank you, Bill. There should not be a presumption that. The real estate tax is the only source of of tax available to the town. It's not just Hingham, but but towns throughout Massachusetts. With, there's the real estate tax, there's also motor vehicle excise tax. Those towns that have hotel hotels, their hotel accommodations taxes, there's the meals tax, there's the recreational marijuana tax. Uh that's been, that's imposed in various towns. So it is very common and very acceptable for towns to be looking for sources of revenue in addition to the real estate tax. I think we need to craft something that is fair, that is equitable. And that will bring in appropriate revenue to the town. Uh but we should not be focusing solely, in my view, on the real estate tax. As the sole vehicle for for funding town operations. Um and I'm looking forward to uh. The next proposal. Um I I was going to say, Liz, is is your group going to come up with the next proposal, or are we going to uh? Figure out the a new group to put it together. I don't, I don't want to uh. To put the burden on you, but uh I've heard members of your task force express their willingness and their commitment to the town. Uh to keep the task force going, and I think this would be uh an appropriate use uh. But I I'm not going to ask for an answer now, but we are going to focus on it. The select board is going to focus on it. And uh we intend to bring this again and to get the input from the advisory committee. Uh and from residents of the town to figure out how we can move forward. So thank you for this. Um and I, Tom, we do not have a vote for this, but I think we do need a vote. Uh because I believe it's the consensus uh of the members of select board to remove Article G G uh from the warrant.
That's what I would recommend you do, yes.
So.
I would make a motion to remove Article G G from the warrant.
Before that second, that I think we need a motion to open the warrant. Then to remove Article G G and then to close the warrant. Uh so I will amend your motion, Bill, to so state. Is there a second?
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Bill?
Hi.
Liz?
Hi.
And Joe, hi. Um so G G uh is off, uh but it is, it is gone but not forgotten. And um. At this point, um I am not sure. Whether or not the advisory committee would be uh adjourning their group. Um as we move to the next item, which is the uh Article F, the budgets.
Thanks, Joe. Yes, advisory committee is going to go into recess. And we will reconvene in our adcom meeting Zoom link that's on our agenda after we just take a couple of minutes break. Thank you.
Thank you. Give them a minute. Okay, um next item on our agenda is a discussion of the. Twenty twenty-two annual town meeting warrant article, which is currently called Article F, uh which is our budget. Um and again, I'm going to first turn this over to Tom and Michelle, and then the select board will take this up.
Sure. So would Joe, would you like Michelle to bring up the spreadsheet?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So while Michelle is doing that, I can uh just remind everyone that all of these budgets have, the department heads have come before uh the select board. Over the past few months and presented their budgets uh to you. And this is the the culmination of that effort, and uh and it's now time to consider. Um what we want to recommend for town meeting. So that's tonight's, that's tonight's goal.
And the spreadsheet that we sent around that's before you has the final department request. Any additional items requested with some some notes here about what those items are and the town administrators recommended priority. Which is also on a separate tab that I can switch to at any time. And then a total select board recommended column here, and if you'd like to make any adjustments or changes, we can do that tonight.
Okay, um what would be helpful? Uh I believe is to highlight um the priorities that. Uh Tom, you have for your requests. So that as we review the budget, we understand um what you think is the most important. Um and so I believe the first one is um for elections, additional pull pad and software.
Yes.
And Michelle, if you can just highlight that on the screen. Where where are we here?
On this sheet or on the other sheet?
Uh on the other sheet.
That would be. Right here.
Okay, um. So this is looking to add uh eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars, and could you explain? Tom or Michelle, why you believe this is a priority?
Sure, this was a request made by the town clerk, and it's an additional pull pad for an additional um voting. Uh sec- uh section down in Linden Ponds. Something that we had not traditionally had, and uh and I felt that it was a while a very small amount of money. I'm trying to be true to the, to the point of any new requests being being identified as identi- as additional requests.
And so, am I correct? You you've identified this as something that's um. Uh important in terms of making sure that the elections run smoothly and that people are are voting uh in a proper manner?
I would say this is the core of what government does. Yes, and is subsequently necessary.
Okay, um. Liz, any any questions on this?
I mean, it's a, it's a s- small amount of money, so I don't want to spend too much time on it, but just so we understand, is it required for Linden Ponds to be a voting precinct?
Yes, we we'll we'll need this pull pad, uh and whether it's funded through this way or another. I I don't know how would, how I would do it otherwise, but Carol has told us she needs this.
Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Got it. Um Bill, any questions?
Uh just briefly, uh and so uh and I don't know if you know, I remember Carol talking about this. So it's a pole pad, but it's it's one pole pad and it covers the entire town and all precincts?
I I thought it was just for one precinct.
Oh, it's just for the one precinct. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
For the Lyd- Lyd- Lyndon Ponds, yeah.
I remember Carol saying it was very important to her, so I, I, I recall. Okay, thank you.
So, Tom, I'm going to, or Michelle, um in terms of the. Added recommendations, and we're not yet voting on this, but I I would ask you to to put it in here so that's reflected in the in the total. Okay, um what is your second priority?
Priority two was a sustainability coordinator. This is a position that I'm proposing to share with the towns, with the town of Cohasset. In a one-third for Cohasset, two-thirds for Hingham. Uh basis where we would receive two-thirds of the hours worked by the by the employee. Um this work has been identified by a number of groups um. And and verified by Michelle and Art and I in my office that is critical to our efforts to um to maintain. The uh the sustainability of our community, and that covers any one of a number of of categories. Um from resiliency uh to energy use and energy efficiency, uh renewables, et et cetera. And I think that, you know, this person would help us um. In very critical ways, in my opinion, uh by allowing us to understand the ways in which we could. Uh tackle some of those problems effectively, and that might include. Um uh identifying new grant opportunities that we um. We in general government may not be aware of or or uh or have the bandwidth to seek. So I think that this is a a critical hire.
I- am I, w- would this person be working only on the ta- only for the town side or also for the schools? Is it, is it really town-wide? I just don't understand the scope of the of the job here.
Sure, great question. This would be a a town-wide effort that would be being made.
Not, so not li- limited to the municipal side? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that's right. Th- this would cover the school buildings, schoolwork, um uh the town buildings, town hall, et cetera. Uh any um, any opportunities for sustainability in town. Uh this position would help us identify.
Got it. Liz, any questions on this?
So this position, um I, we've heard a lot of support from the community. I I think it's really critical to. Um implementing the climate action plan. I guess just a question on timing. Does this person need to come on? Um, you know, kind of immediately in F Y twenty-three or? Um. It it, would this person come on after the consultant's work is done with the climate action plan? Just trying to understand that dependency.
Sure, so I didn't, I don't see this as a, as their depend- as a dependency there. I think that we have the work to start. Those folks out with right now or this this position out with right now. However, they will be in large part guided, I imagine, by the um by the findings from that report. But there's a significant amount of work that could be tackled immediately.
Okay.
And Tom, just following up on Liz's question, is that the expectation of the other town that we be, we, we would be sharing this position with?
Yes, Cohasset is expecting this as a January, as a July one start.
Okay. Bill?
So I I don't have any comments, Joe, but we're going to be able to 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 discuss this when Tom's done, correct?
I'm sorry?
I don't have any specific questions, but we're going to be able to um discuss the proposals when he's done, correct?
Uh well, for these proposals, um for like for the top two, I wanted to make sure that that we understood his priority and then. Have the questions on this. Um on these positions and ask and answer now.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I just want to make sure I, yeah, I I just want to make sure we're gonna, this guy, I don't have any questions.
Okay. So. Michelle, if we were to, I I want to keep a running total because um. We're spending money beyond the zero. Beyond what we have. Um so if we, if we did this combined with the other one, what what are, what are we up to?
It would be up to. Forty-nine, eight seventy-five.
Okay, um. Then um I guess. Picking up Bill on what you were saying, I'm I'm wondering if what we want to do. At this point, because we we've got your, we've got your top two, and and there may be others that we want to consider. But now start going through the budget. Uh as a whole, not not focusing only on these, and then um. And and then seeing where we come out. The the danger of going that road, so the the next one that we don't have here is is the grant writer. But that's, that is a priority number four, so I I don't even want to. Be talking about whether or not it's, it's worth it until we understand what priority number three is. And then we've got to do a a balancing act between how much we're spending and then the marginal cost of the next addition.
Got it. J- Joe, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
So if you, Michelle, if you go to the other tab. If you had those, cause those discussions, Joe, from this page.
Yeah.
That might make some sense, and then you can, you, we can flag which ones you'd like us to add onto the next.
Right, okay.
The other page, and then we can go through and take those votes.
So so your your priority number three, which is, so we, I think we've, we've discussed the the top two. Um I I'm, before we finish on the stop, so the sustainability coordinator, what is our share?
Oh, forty-eight thousand dollars.
No, no, is it two-thirds, one-third or?
Two-thirds, yep.
Okay, got it. Um. And so the next one is the uh part-time office assistant with the Weir River Water System. Why is that a priority, Tom?
Sure, so right now we have, the intention is that this position will. Sit upstairs um outside of the Weir River Water System Director's Office and outside of the Town Engineer's Office. And um the the available location is directly between those two, those two offices, so. It's a unique opportunity to share a position. The Weir River Water System does have this in their budget, and they will be funding a part-time office assistant with that budget. I've asked them to hold off until this uh this process is complete to see if there's an opportunity. To uh instead hire a full-time position, partially paid by Weir River and partially paid by the town. Um what I, I done, what I've identified, and the reason I have identified this as my number three priority. Is because the town engineer right now is in essence a one-person. A one-person role. Uh J R Fry is an outstanding town engineer. However, he has no support. Uh he is working on our wharfs, he's working on uh all of our building projects, the entire road building. Um schedule. Uh he does uh. It it work for the permitting boards, he's before the permitting boards on all of our projects. Uh and he does a lot of support work for CPC. Um which this position would be able to help um help provide assistance to. There are a, a number of, a number of um. Important roles that the town engineer is actively engaged in. And I worry that things will slip through the cracks despite J R's best efforts. And and I think that having a part-time um office assistant dedicated to that role, that and CPC. Will help us to um. To ensure that that doesn't happen.
What percent of the salary is covered by um the water company?
Fifty.
So this is a, this is a fifty-fifty split?
Yes.
And so the twenty-six, three sixty-six represents the town's share of that.
That, that's right.
And is there a reason that, um I like Liz's question, it's a reason that we need to move it, move forward this coming fiscal year with this person?
The reason for that is that we'll be hiring the Weir River Water System part-time assistant. Um immediately, uh or as immediately as we can. I was hesitant to do that because I think the um, the. Hiring process would be better served if we could tell the applicants whether this was a full-time or part-time position. I think we would have a very different, different applicant pool depending on full-time or part-time position. So I've asked um Russell Tierney to hold off on hiring his part-time assistant until we made this decision. And if we make this decision to fund it through town meeting, then he would hold off until ju- um, well, we would start the. Start the hiring process in June, but we would uh, we wouldn't hire uh until July one.
Okay. Liz, questions?
I don't have questions about this one. Um I I I think J R Fry is. Has a lot on his plate. He's fried. We're, it's, I I'm worried. So if this help, helps, obviously, assistant town. Engineer is number eight, but if if this is a way to help him. Um I I think, I think that's, it serves the town well.
Bill?
Yeah, I mean, I was sure Liz's sentiment, if this avoids having to get number eight and saves us eighty-five thousand dollars at eight. Then I think this is, could be money well spent, so.
Yeah, and and I guess I I'm concerned that to the extent that um the town engineer. Is not able to address certain projects. address certain projects uh, to the extent that they need to be addressed, the town suffers. Just not only in the quality of work, but things that get missed. So um, I I agree. So Michelle, if you add that number and put it in, so we're now at seventy-six, two forty-one. I'll just tell you, I, we are reaching the limit for me um, of how much I wanna spend in addition to uh, the level service budget. Which is not a reflection on the fact that we've got a lot of needs, uh but um, recognizing that there is a hole, uh, every dollar we spent makes it larger. And it's not just for this coming fiscal year, it builds each fiscal year after that. So I, w- we can continue, but I I just wanna express my view that um, we're, we're I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about going beyond this. The next one, uh, Tom, which is the Part-Time Grant Writer?
Sure, this is a, this is a position that, um, you know, Michelle and I regularly hear from Advisory Committee and others in town that a grant writer would off, it's believed that a grant writer could pay for themselves. I don't doubt that. I think that there are a lot of grant, uh especially a part-time grant writer, uh but there are a lot of grant opportunities out there. Some of them more competitive perhaps than than uh folks wanna believe. But I do think that there's opportunity for, for additional grants for the town to get. I will point out that uh with uh, as promised, when we hired um our, our second ATA last year, that position is in fact doing some uh, some additional grant writing. As a matter of fact, um, Art has taken on the role of um, of liaison to the Green Communities Program and has uh, has received, well, no, uh, he's doing good things with the Green Communities Program. Uh, we're, we're not allowed to talk about that uh process, that program just yet. Uh, but anyway, so some good things are happening there. And so that is being fulfilled. However, uh, you know, more, more expertise and more work from Grant uh, from the dedicated Grant Writer would presumably produce more grants through the town. Whether or not I can say that it definitively would pay for itself, I don't know. Um, I think that there's a decent chance that could, and that's why I have it hi- um prioritized as highly as I do.
Are you anticipating this as an employee or as an independent contractor?
And this, this model would be an employee, this would be a permanent employee, part-time, permanent part-time employee?
Yep, is, is there an opportunity to have this outsourced to companies that do grant writing? There's some sort of contractor basis. And I don't know how they function in terms of re- remuneration, but you know, if they are paid based on their success, um, then uh, we're really not out of pocket, uh as long as there's an appropriate contingent fee, if you will, um, for that. So um, I, I have been a supporter of making sure that we apply for grants and of getting, you know, grant applications in. And to the extent we need resources, we should use them. I'm hesitant at this stage where we're in a hole to be um, bringing on another employee. Liz, your thoughts?
I, I agree with you, Joe, and I, I think there are opportunities here to use contract resources. Um, so that coupled with, I know Art has been doing a great job um, looking at different grant programs. And my expectation is that the Sustainability Coordinator would be working with grants as well or seeking out grants. So um, that may be a way to just kind of move uh in a fa- phased approach with this. And then, you know, perhaps next year, it consider bringing on a part-time or even full-time grant writer.
Yeah, it's a great point, Liz. I'd say that there's a high likelihood that the Green Communities Program, that Art has been shepherding for the last year, um, would likely move to the Sustainability Coordinator if that position were hired. Um, thereby freeing him, him and his time up to do more of this in other places. So that's just a great.
Good point. Bill?
Joe, I would agree with you that given where we are, looking at next year, a five-point-eight million-dollar deficit. I'm not gonna be comfortable going beyond three here. Um, so I, I, yeah, I'm not gonna be comfortable with number four. Uh, and and quite honestly, I'm just to give you my insight into this, you know, the, the, this deliberative process here. I'm not gonna be comfortable with, go, I mean, if this is, if this is, Tom, this is your order of merit list and these are your priorities?
Yes, it is.
I am happy to s- to start discussing one, two, and three now. Um, we've, we've heard one through fourteen already, and I'm happy to continue to listen and and he, and he, and hear the advocacy for these, for, for, for four through fourteen. But um, I'm also happy to start talking about one through three and see where we are in terms of consensus there too, Joe. Um, so I'll ta- I'll follow your lead.
Okay, so um, I, I think, Bill, you, your point is, is well-taken. I wanted to really get the very top priorities uh of the town administrator addressed. And then I would ask, Tom, if there are others, I know you've got them in priority order, but if there are others that you wanna call out. Um, and if you do call them out, uh, I'd like to hear why you think it's essential that they happen this year. Or in, in, you know, in the upcoming budget, as opposed to.
So I, I, I don't believe there's any others that are essential for this, for this year's budget. Um, these, I called them out and I highlighted them and put them in as additional requests because these are, these are in some places, um, the, the firefighters, the police officers. These are things that the town is going to have to do. Um, we are undermanned and uh in say, in, in some capacities, we are, we're working in unsafe ways. And I think we need to consider increasing the minimum manning, both in our, well, in our fire department. And then uh, and also adding a, another police officer across each of the three shifts. So that's why those are in there. I don't believe that has to happen this year. You know, as we look at the, the pressures on the budget, I, I, I agree with the assessment that, that you guys are talking about right now. I would say that um, just to call it out, the paramedic school tuition, you know, that's, that's something that I'm hopeful uh, that is going to be needed, we believe. However, I'm hopeful, and I think the chief is as well, that our new um, uh pay scale is, is, can, can affect our ability in a positive way to attract new firefighters, which is what that is intended, that line item is intended to, to cover. Uh, in case we had to start hiring EMTs instead of, instead of paramedics. However, um, w- we're hopeful that that's not gonna come to fruition. Um, and then the last, the, the, you know, we talked about the Assistant Town Engineer. I do think that that is a scenario that, that may be needed. But I agree with your seeming collective wisdom about the um, office assistant. Um, and that ability to take, as I like to say, some steam out of the kettle for JR. And then we can assess, right? We can see where things are next year uh at this time after, uh, after that position is in place. And whether or not it will um, it will assist them in, in to, to him to an extent that perhaps the Assistant Town Engineer may not be needed. But right now, my assessment i- it was, but again, uh, having that, that office assistant now would be a, a great starting point. So I, I'm in full agreement with your assessment of these top three.
Okay, um.
Joe, can I just make a comment or ask a question about the um, the Assistant Town Engineer? It would be nice to understand, Tom, if there's a way for you and or JR to articulate things that he, projects he just does not have the bandwidth to do and what that means in terms of, it's, it costs time and money, right? So just so we have a sense of not adding that person means X in terms of these nu- number of projects just could not physically be done. I think that helps us build the case for next year.
Sure, I can do that, yep. I will say anecdotally, when I call him, I'm, you know, I, this is my, my life. But I regularly call him, unfortunately, after hours on weekends, he's always answering the phone with his, with his young family climbing on him. And uh, and he, he's, he just is a non-stop, very hard worker, uh very dedicated. But to your point, Liz, that's not, that's not tenable for, forever.
Right, these FTS aren't based on a hundred hours a week, or shouldn't be, right?
Um, and to what extent are we outsourcing um, engineering-type projects that once we have this person, we'll be able to keep in-house?
Yeah, that's a good question. I couldn't quantify that, Joe. I will say um, that there are a number of uh projects that are outsourced to outside engineers. You know, one of the uh, one of the things that we talked about when we remade the Engineering Department a few years ago was that we wanted to use, um, we wanted to use uh, uh, project, um, project management engineering firms uh on, on a more frequent basis. And rather than having that, those projects managed with internal staff. We haven't had too many of those projects where that's come up yet, but that's starting now with, with a couple of, uh, well, certainly. We, not that we would have had our town engineer manage Foster or the public safety facility, but those types of projects, right? That's where, uh, that's where we would certainly see those savings.
Yep, and you know, I'm, I'm thinking about the Wharf Wall projects.
Yeah.
Uh, climate resiliency projects uh that are gonna be coming online, uh, and they need to be done right. Um, so I, I think this is down the road, but I, I think given where we are financially, I would not move forward with that this year.
Yeah, I agree.
So uh, Liz or Bill, are there any other particulars that you wanna press on?
No, uh, no questions, but I'm happy to, to advocate uh when you're ready.
Okay, Liz?
Could you just remind me what the um, the townwide turf maintenance that was landscaping around the fences or something?
That's right. So this is, uh, so last year, we have a, we have a program now in place that's working wonderfully on the fields in town. Um, what i- in the courts, et cetera, what this, what this does is provides for the apron, if you will, around those fields. So weed whacking around the fences, around the benches, making the um, making those facilities uh just in general more, more appealing and more um, more enjoyable for the people that are using them. I will say that um, you know, I, I'll, I'll, I once again enter into con- conversation with, with the DPW Department about potential for some overtime perhaps to, to cover these things within their budget um, in the short term until this can be figured out how to deal with it long-term. But uh, but I'll, I'll speak with uh Superintendent Sylvester and, and try to figure some of this out for next year, if it doesn't get funded.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I mean, I think if, if that not funding that derails that whole maintenance program, we need to know that.
Yeah, I, yeah, so define derail, but I don't believe it will. I mean, the, 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 those fields are, are going to be, they are now and will continue to be in excellent condition. Like I said, it's just kind of that outside apron around them, um, you know, that, that we need to pay a little bit of more attention to. Um, I do believe that there's probably a way to do that, some of that this coming year, perhaps not a permanent solution, but uh, but something that we can, we can work through for the coming year.
Okay, great, thank you.
I, I, Liz, I think, I think where you're going in terms of derailing is that there is now a unified arrangement. Uh, and we wanna make sure that um, town fields, school fields, that, that our obligations uh for maintenance are not gonna be impaired if we don't proceed with this. And I think that's where Liz was going. I wanna make sure, Tom, that you're in agreement with that.
Yeah, no, I understood and, and I, and I am in agreement with that. It's, what, what I meant was um, and next, if there was an expectation that the entire apron was gonna be done with the existing maintenance field pro- pro- within the mate, existing maintenance field.
Got it, okay.
Our maintenance allocation, then that would not happen, but I do believe we can, we can find a way through this next year.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
So, before we go to a, a vote, I'm gonna ask if there are members of the public who have questions about any of these requests. And we will do our best to respond, so. Questions? I am seeing none.
Uh, Joe, I think John Borger is.
Oh, I'm sorry, John, I did not see you, apologize.
Uh, John Borger, fifty-three Lafayette Avenue, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I, I just briefly, I just wanna say um, uh, we really appreciate the priority you've given to the Sustainability Coordinator. Um, you know, a number of um, Hingham entities, committees, civic groups have lined up behind this. So uh, it's gratifying to see it on the, the top three. We appreciate it very much. We understand the tremendous pressure you're working under. And uh, we in Hingham, Ned Zero, will do everything we can to work with uh whatever staffing we end up with, including Art and uh Sustainability Coordinator. And the, the light plant as well, importantly, so we'll, we'll make it work one way or the other, but thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other members of the public? So John, if you can put your hand, there we go, great. I am seeing no other hands. So I am prepared to move to a motion. Um, and Li- uh, Michelle, can you go over to the other tab? Um, and you have these three items filled in. I see the first, the second. And right. Okay, um, so what I would suggest we do is do a motion to recommend a fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget uh, as follows. And then we, I would just go to the line under the Select Board, Total Recommended for each of the categories. So the first one would be for the Select Board, eight-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars. Um, Human Resources, what are you doing here, Liz? I mean, Michelle?
I'm just double checking that these are actually in there, okay.
Okay. Eight-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars for Human Resources, one-sixty-eight, nine forty-two. The Reserve Fund of seven-oh-nine, two ninety-one, Town Accountant of three ninety-six, nine eighty-five. Information Technology, six thirty-three, one thirty-eight, Assessors.
Joe, you mind if I just, you call out nine eighty-five, it's actually nine sixty-five on that other one. I just wanna make sure that the record.
Um, where did I go here? Where are we?
I'm sorry, Town Accountant.
Town Accountant is.
An extra twenty bucks.
Town, Town Accountant is three ninety-six, nine sixty-five.
Yes, now you had said nine eighty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to see if I can get that extra twenty bucks.
Yes, sorry, yeah, you're right. I do not wanna give, okay. Information Technology was, Michelle, let me ask, can you make this just slightly larger? Just hit the uh, the zoom function for.
Print, hang on one sec.
Oh, the, I just.
A little zoom in there, yeah, there you go.
There we go, okay. No, that's good. We'll find out how good it is. Information Technology, uh, six thirty-three, one thirty-eight. Assessors, forty, uh, four-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, for Treasurer Collector, four fifty-one, three fifty-nine. Legal Services, three-hundred-ninety-five thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-two. Town Meeting, forty-six, six fifty-three. I'm just gonna stop for one second. Does that include our um, a special town meeting in the fall?
No, it does not. That would be a reserve fund transfer if that, I assume we will do it, but um.
Okay, that, we would not typically budget that, got it. Town Clerk, move your cursor. Oh, that's my cursor, I'm sorry. Uh, it was a, it's two oh, uh, two oh-five, two forty-one. Elections, fifty-one, oh twenty-six, Conservation Commission, two-hundred-and-thirty-four, fi- uh, four oh-six. Um, Community Planning, two sixty-three, seventy-six. Land Use and Development, one sixty-three, two ninety-four. Bear Cove Park, thirty-three, five twenty-eight. Uh, Town Hall, seven-ten, one eighty-four. Grand Army Memorial Hall, twenty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand. So I will make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz, you're muted.
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Joe? Hi. Okay, uh, next, we're gonna move uh to Public Safety, and I'm gonna do Police Department separate because I believe Bill is going to recuse from that vote.
Recu- yeah, Joe, if you could, pub- Public Safety and Recreation, I need to recuse as well.
Okay, so uh, at this point, um, I will do, yep, I'll do a motion for uh, the Police Department. Just one second here. Um, so this is uh, to recommend a fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget. Um, is the motion. to recommend a fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget, um, is the motion for the, uh, police department of seven million, one eighty-seven, one eighty-nine. Is there a second?
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Liz?
Hi.
Joe? I, and the record will show that Bill Ramsey has abstained. Uh, we can now move to, um, the next part. Liz, do you want to take over on this? Or do you want me to continue?
You, you keep going, Jeff.
Okay, I'll keep going. So I will, um, I'm going to get some sort of battle pay for this. Okay, so now I'll, uh, make a move to recommend a fiscal year twenty-three budget as follows for the following categories. Uh, fire department, seven million, one seventy-one, two, um, one seventy-one, seven sixty-eight. Uh, dispatch services, nine ninety-one, four twenty. Building commissioners, commissioner, two seventy-eight, seven fifty-one. Animal control, eighty-one, eight ninety-six. The harbor master, three oh seven, eight eighty. Um, and public safety utilities, five fifty-eight, two fifty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Liz?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
And Joe, hi. Um, I'm, we have not gone over the school part, so I'm going to move past that right now and we'll go back. Um, and we're going to start with, so Bill, you need to recuse yourself on what part of, is it public works or?
Uh, no, just to, uh, Hingham Rec Recreation.
Oh, we're not there yet.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so, um, I will stop before we get there. So I'll move to recommend a fiscal year twenty-three bud- uh, twenty twenty-three budget as follows for these categories. Um, and I just want to be clear, the highway recreation tree and park is not something that you need to recuse yourself, Bill?
No, because, no, because recre- the, the highway recreation is the division of the, of DPW, so no, I don't need to do that.
Okay, good. Um, so it's, uh, why did you change that category, Michelle?
I don't think it's usually called that. I think it's usually DPW slash highway.
That's what I thought.
But I don't want it to be confusing.
Okay, so highway, uh, tree and park, uh, that's four, four million, three fifty-four, oh eighty-seven. Uh, landfill recycling, one million, seven thirty-eight, one ninety-five. The sewer commission, uh, three million, seven oh three, oh forty-one. Um, oh, that concludes public works. I'll take a second on that.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Joe? Hi. Move forward now to the next category. Um, okay, so then I will, uh, make a motion to recommend a fiscal year twenty-two and three budget as follows. Uh, for the health department, three eighty-seven, oh sixty-three. Elder services, three twelve, seven thirty-four. Veteran's services, three oh seven, six oh nine. Um, health imperatives, twenty-seven hundred dollars. South Shore Women's Center, thirty-seven hundred. I think we can keep going, um, unless you want, uh, yeah, we can keep going here. So, um, library, two million, one eighty-one, seven thirty-six. And for the rec commission, this is where we need to stop, Bill?
Correct.
Yes.
You know, actually, Joe, I, I, my apologies, I need to hold on the rec commission and the trustees of the bathing beach.
Okay, so then, um, I'll take a second then on the categories we've just covered.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Liz?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Joe, hi. Okay, I'm now going to do, uh, recreation, uh, commission. Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't do the motion first. I move to recommend a fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget as follows for the recreation million, recreation commission, three seventy-one, two twenty-seven. And the trustees of the bathing, bathing beach, forty-six seventy-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
Hi.
Joe, I, and the record will reflect that Bill Ramsey has abstained. We now move to the historical commission. I make a motion to recommend a fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget as follows. Um, the, uh, looks like we're going now to the, uh, country club, which is, uh, one million. He moved it on me here.
But Joe, I think it's historical and celebrations.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Uh, the, uh, historical commission is, uh, that's ninety thousand, eight forty-six. Celebrations, seventeen thousand, five sixty-seven. Uh, the country club, uh, one million, nine eighty-eight, oh fifteen. The Ware River Water System, twelve million, eight eighty-one, four forty-two. Um, the debt service, uh, five million, eight thirty-five, three thirty-one. Uh, I think we can just keep going. Um, group insurance, uh, uh, seven million, seventy-one thousand, oh sixty-two. Other post-employment benefits, uh, one million, two eighty-nine, one seventy-three. Contributory retirement, five million, eight thirty-seven, five thirteen. Workers' compensation, three hundred and thirty thousand. Unemployment, thirty thousand mandate, I'm sorry, mandatory Medicare, one million, sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Um, and then we have property and liability insurance, one million, one fourteen, four sixty-four. I believe that concludes it. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
And Joe, hi. Uh, Michelle, is there anything below this?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, so now we return to the, um, schools, uh, to education. We've got the, uh, school department. Um, their request is for, um, eight hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and nine. Um, I do not believe we have a priority list of, um, requests. Uh, so I, I believe we, we are simply considering a, a whole number. And, um, we, we need to address how to, how, how to, how to deal with that total. Um, I mean, one, one thing, Tom, I know that we have done in the past is to seek to maintain some sort of, uh, like the sixty, forty ratio. And, um, if we did that, what would, what would the, um, what would the, the amount?
Approximately one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Nope, so.
No.
So it looks like the answer is a hundred, about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Um, you want to just double check that? Yep, I th- I think that's right. Um, I know that, I'm sorry. Yeah, so that's correct. So it's, it's the hundred and fourteen, three sixty-one is, is the, um.
Yeah, you're right.
Sixty, forty ratio. Um, I know that we have gotten, um, at least I've gotten a number of, of comments in terms of making sure that we prioritize, um, the arts director. Um, and Michelle or Tom, do you know, um, what the dollar amount would be for that? That person or that position, I should say?
I believe it's budgeted for FY twenty-three at a hundred and twenty thousand.
Um, so it would be my recommendation that we go over the sixty, forty ratio and bump this up from the one fourteen to the one twenty so that we cover that and so that we're assured that at least there is the money in the school budget for, um, the fine arts director. Um, that, I'm just giving you my preliminary thoughts, uh, Liz and Bill. We, where are you coming out, uh, on, on that suggestion? I'll start with Liz.
I, I agree with supporting the director of fine arts. We've certainly received a lot of feedback on that, um, and, and the need for that in terms of supporting arts education. Um, the numbers of students participating in, in the arts and music program is way down compared to pre-pandemic levels. Um, so that's, that's obviously an issue, plus just not having the coordination at a, a director level. Um, I guess I'm, I'm still trying to wrap my head around the one point seven million. Um, and how that should be best utilized. Um, I guess I, I'm, I'm having trouble understanding that surplus if, if all, if all thirty-two positions are filled. Um, which I guess is, is great. If we feel like those positions are filled with the right people and we have the surplus, then is that money that we can use for these other positions that have been identified as critical? I guess that's, that's the question in my mind from the earlier conversation.
So I, I think, um, that to the extent, I, I, I think moving forward, I want to make sure that we have the, the fine arts director position funded, but I would, if we go forward, I would charge the advisory committee to, in fact, look at the very question that you're asking. And if their assessment is, there's other money to pay for this, that it doesn't need to be in the budget, then they'll come back to us with that recommendation. Um, but since we are moving forward, now knowing that it, it will go to them, but I want to at least have that as our starting position, uh, to make sure that that position is in fact funded. Um, but I, I appreciate your concern. I think, I think that's, I, I get it.
I mean, if there's extra money, I think the counselors are valid positions too, right? I mean, I think those were the other, there were guidance counselors at the, each, I don't have it in front of me, but in the, at the elementary schools, I believe.
Um, yeah, I, again, I don't, I don't have the, the breakdown here and, um, so I guess, are, are you saying that it's so, it put the hundred and twenty thousand in and if in fact you don't need it for the fine arts director because it's otherwise funded, uh, use it for something else?
Uh, yes, I mean, if, if that money is available now, I, I would want to understand why we wouldn't fill those positions now. Why would we?
Well, I think, I mean, what I heard from the discussion is that you, you interview, you, you know, you got to make sure you get the right persons at.
Of course.
Now may not be the time to do it, so I, I would not, uh, second guess the school committee's judgment about when to bring folks on.
Uh, understood, understood.
Yep. Um, Bill Ramsey?
So, yeah, so I guess my bottom line is I, I agree with funding the position at the one twenty, so I, I think we've heard from a number of people who want the position. I'm somebody who, when I went through Hingham High School, I, I very much benefited from concert band and in many ways. So I know it's a wonderful program and I think it's something we should fund and it's, we've, we've been hearing about it for many years, so I'm for it one hundred percent. Uh, to Liz's point and to Nancy McDonald's point as well, I'm just trying to figure out how, how we got the surplus and I know, you know, I thought I heard John Ferris say that the thirty-two positions have all been filled. So I, I'm trying to figure out how this, how we have a one point seven million dollar surplus and, and I know Carrie said that you can't carry the money over and, and I get that point. I'm just trying to figure out how we can't use the money this year to hire a fine arts director. Um, but you know, I guess we'll leave that to advisory to kind of go through it and figure out in the budget. But if the thirty, if all thirty-two positions are filled, where, where, where the, where the one point seven surplus come from?
So Bill, I, I think what we heard is there's several more months left in the year. We don't know it, in fact, what the dollar amount of that surplus is going to be. Um, and you know.
Oh, it's projected.
It, it was projected and it was a clear caveat. It could be less or it could be more. Um, that was, I, I guess, a best guess at this point, um, without a commitment. Um, and, um, I, I think we need to be sensitive to the financial position we're in, and I also am sensitive to the fact that the schools are going through a strategic planning process. And, um, I, I just question how wise it is for us to fund substantial positions prior to the completion of that process. Uh, and it, it, that's, I think, you know, one of the reasons that we did not do an override for this year is we need to know what the number should be. Um, and I don't want to, you know, it, 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 it will, you know, we, we need to let the process play out and I don't want to, um, figured that out one way or the other right now. Um, make it, make sense, Bill?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what you're getting at. I said, I said I was for funding the one twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the, the surplus, but.
Right, but, okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree with you, Joe. I think we're all waiting for the, the outcome of the strategic plan as well as the staff audit. Um, I guess my only point is if there are critical needs, especially from a counseling perspective at the elementary level, I'd rather have those positions filled now, even if we say next year, oh, we don't need them anymore. Like if there are children in need and we have one point seven million dollars, that just feels like we should act sooner rather than later.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah, I totally agree. And, but I, I think, you know, putting the one twenty aside for the fine arts director is, is, is great and you know, it's something that we've been hearing about for, for years. And, um, it's a great program and I think it's something that would benefit the schools and the students very much, so, so I'm fully supportive of it.
So, Bill, did I hear you say you were in the band?
I was, and you know, and it's, it's something I benefited from tremendously in life, you know, the confidence of, you know, playing an instrument and being in the band. It's, it was a wonderful experience for me, so I know that students, um, benefit from the program in many, many ways.
What was your instrument?
I played trombone.
Great. You'll have to give us a rendition at some.
Yes.
Um, okay, um, I'll accept, uh, comments or questions from the me- members of the public on, on this, on this point. I see Liza.
Uh, yes, that, thank you very much and I, I just wanted to.
I'm sorry, just before we do, I just, um.
Do I have to identify myself?
Well, I, I know you are, but, uh, I, I wanted to know if we had a, do we have a quorum of the, I know the school committee is not there. I just would understand.
Now, um, I think it's just Ness and is Jen still on Ness? So I think it's just three of us.
Oh, great, perfect. Okay, thank you.
So, uh, Liza O'Reilly, nineteen Porter's Cove Road. So I just wanted to give you a very top line of the variance. Um, so we had some in, in personnel, we had some movement variance. And so we had a very good hiring season of being able to hire the people at lower salaries than the budgeted. Also, I, I would like to also say the budget was established a year ago. And so we had, you know, there's just changes in any budget of anticipating where we're going and we've had the, you know, the pandemic has still been going on for us this year. So we had a good hiring season, which meant that all the people that we had on board to either replace or the new positions, we were able to hire them at favorable rates. Um, we also had some delays in hiring people because it was very difficult to get school staffing. We've also had challenges with getting substitutes and replacing people. And so we haven't had cost, you know, not so great for the kids, but we haven't been able, we didn't have to pay substitutes because we couldn't get them. So those are some of the staffing variations that occurred. Um, we also had, I'm just reading the, the list from John, some underspent contracts. Um, in special education, the big reduction in the fiscal year twenty-three budget of the students aging out of the out-of-placement um, tuitions, those actually began somewhat this year. And so then the anticipated tuitions this year, it turned out to be lower. Um, so that was a savings. And then, as John had mentioned, we applied grant money to some things that we had budgeted to use up the grants, so then the budgeted money was still there. We also were forced to use our own transportation for special education transportation because we couldn't get transportation from. Because we couldn't get transportation from the outside services. And so that ended up being a savings. Um, however, we were over budget on energy costs. And we don't know how that's going to go the rest of, with energy costs, especially considering what's happening in the world. Right now, so. Those are some of the major top line reasons for this fluctuation. And also of, you know, what we shared with you earlier, we just learned about this yesterday.
Yeah, no.
And so we have a lot to sort out and we are talking about. And we do want to work with the town of how could we use.
Yeah.
This excess to apply to next year. Um, but I greatly appreciate your commitment to the fine arts director because. That is something that we've also heard tremendously from the community. And it is something that's, that's critical, um, but I will say that the administrative functions. That we're asking for are similar to the challenges that you have with your staff. That not having those administrative functions is detrimental to the operations that we have and so. But we understand, you know, you need revenue to cover things, so that's part of what we'll be looking at. When we evaluate this and hopefully tomorrow night with the Aces meeting. We can have a discussion because also we have to post a meeting for all of us to be able to talk. And because of the time crunch, fortunately, the Aces meeting is posted for tomorrow. So hopefully we can get through a lot of that discussion tomorrow. Um, and get further down the path, so I hope that helps with understanding, but I'll um. Ask John Ferris to send all of you more information about what he shared with us yesterday.
Yeah, Liza, that was exceptionally helpful, so thank you. I, I just, just a follow up question. Was any of the 1.7? I guess funds, I'm, I'll call it savings, uh, attributed to decreased enrollment. In, in the schools so that there were basically, you know, less kids to educate, so you, you could realize some cost savings there?
Um. Not really, and I guess I'm going to challenge you back on that point that. It's really sad that we lost these kids in our district. And that these families chose to go somewhere else. And that we should be doing everything we can to get them back. As opposed to looking at the decrease of losing four hundred students. As just a cost savings and what's the benefit of the cost savings? We don't have to educate as many kids. So um. I'm trying to look at it, I, I, I do look at it and my responsibilities of. Are there cost savings? I don't believe there are because um, or that was already built in or. I'm not really sure, we didn't look at that. But going forward. I'd really like the town to look at, how do we get these kids back? And what do we need to do to get them back? I think the bulk of them left in the middle school ages and, and early high school. And so I don't believe those students are necessarily, necessarily gonna come back because they will have. Been established in their new school or their new community. Um, and it, it would be unlikely for them to come back. We have seen that at the elementary level, they are coming back kindergarten, first grade. Those, those numbers are higher, but I don't know where birth rates are going these days. But um, that enrollment's coming back. But um. You know, I think in the long run, we do have to really look at ourselves and consider. How do we, how do we get back to our glory days?
Yep, so I, I will just uh.
But.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, one thing I will add to this is that the four hundred thousand. That is already applied. To the um, federal dollars to balance the budget is part of this 1.7.
Yep.
So um, so it's really not the whole, I mean, that's part of moving it all around and figuring it all out.
So I, I, I just would not characterize what you said as a challenge to what I said. I was asking an accounting question.
Yeah.
As to whether or not it was, I wasn't saying it was a good thing or a bad thing. And it, I should not be characterized that way.
Okay.
I just want to understand how, how the dollar amounts came out.
Yeah, I, I get that and I, I appreciate that, but I've heard it from other people. And maybe it's coming across as accounting, but then the more I think about it. I'm like, we shouldn't only think about it from an accounting standpoint, should think about it of the values of our community as well.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, but that's not inconsistent with the position I've been taking.
Yep, I appreciate that.
Uh, I see Doc Gallo. Good to see you. You are still muted.
I get, I'm.
There we go, great.
Uh, thank you, Dorothy Gallo, One Volunteer Road. I don't want to repeat anything that anybody said on this topic and certainly. Don't intend to comment on the music director or the finance director or any of the other things on the list, that's not my role. But I think I would like to add my way of thinking about um, this. Surplus, in fact, I am not going to use that word anymore in this brief conversation because it's just. The wrong way to think about this amount of money. This amount of money is unexpended funds from the FY twenty two budget. And at this point, it's simply a projection. With, you know, a third of the year still to go. On costs that uh, could come up, it, it's a larger amount than typically would occur. But there are two or three sort of caveats there. One is. That um, the tradition for all town departments is if one doesn't expend. The dollars that were appropriated by town meeting in one year last year. For specific, down to the number of people and the number of John mentioned, the number of pencils and all of that. Those dollars are part of the number of dollars that were appropriated for very specific. Things in this budget and if they're not expended. Uh, for a variety of reasons, a good hiring season, as Liza suggested, is, is one of the. The, the biggies and tuitions is another biggie, then they're supposed to go back to the town. Because the town appropriated them for FY for uh, twenty two, but twenty two. For very specific things, if they weren't needed for those things or if some of the costs of those things that would have been projected. Gave us a savings, then, then that's a good thing. There are some exceptions to that in the sense that there was a commit, the committee that was formed several years ago. Because we had a really troublesome situation that occurred with some move in. Students with very heavy duty, specific uh, out of district specialized needs and tuitions. That through our budget totally under the bus in uh, in uh, January, late January after the budget had just been presented every year. So the way that that article, that town meeting uh, eventually passed. And that um, the legislature took action on was that if there were. Funds at the end of the year, not surplus funds, but funds that were unexpended for the things that they were intended to be. Uh, expended for, then dollars from that could. By the school committee without action of by advisory or, or by the selectmen. That dollars from that number of unexpended dollars could be appropriated to keep that uh, reserve fund. Uh, at a level that was limited, you couldn't keep adding to it every year. And we've been fortunate not to have to use it for the fun, the, the expenses. We don't have. And have never had a surplus fund and so I feel really strongly that we need. For the community to understand and not be misled into thinking. That we have monies that were always overinflated, so there'd be money left at the end of the year. I think things like that are easy assumptions for people to make because it's a complicated concept. So I just feel really strongly that we want to use the appropriate words here. And that monies in every department uh, can't simply say, I mean, it's very tempting. Because here's this always apparent money which may not be here at the end of the year, at least not in that amount. Uh, that we can use it for something else that we need or want. But mostly need because we always do need space budgets, um, that we can't just expend it for things like that. And so. I, I. It's, it's important to be careful when we talk about things like special ed, but you know, one point seven, uh, but sounds like a lot of money. A million is obviously a lot of money, but uh, when I last was there. We had a budget year where we had over one million dollars. In five special ed tuitions, five. Because there were, there were individual tuitions that were over two hundred thousand dollars. And so. Some amounts of money and some amounts of change, uh, of a, of a change in, in allocations uh. Uh, is to be expected, but um, they can be the big, the big things. Um, we'll look what's happening to gasoline and we're talking about for this year, let alone for next year. You know, we have an amount of money in the budget, your budget for next year and we're talking about the rest of this year, what's going to happen with uh, particularly these diesel, diesel fuel. So, so I think to think of this as John's first pass and he does a great job, his numbers are, are accurate. John's first pass at what could be there with what we know now. Is just that, it's a first pass of a projection. There is a long history. I'm not sure it's law, but it's been, it's been a, um, policy and practice in this town that dollars. Need to go back that were unexpended and they go to the reserve. Um, and there is an exception to that. Uh, in terms of special ed, which when we do have dollars, then that's not a bad place to, to park them until they're, until they're needed. And that is, has been legally uh, formulated that committee and that amount of money in that language, so. So I wish everybody well. I mean, it is amazing. I, I turn on these meetings just to kind of look and peek. And I stay for every meeting for the, the whole meeting because I care about it, but. I really care about things that are what, what is the right thing to do and there is a right way to manage. This unexpended money from a prior year, not just this year obviously, but every year. So, thank you.
Thank you, and it's really good to see you. I see Ness Corente.
Hi, Ness Corente, seventeen Ward Street. Thanks so much for taking my question and um, I agree. And it's nice to see you, Dr. Gallo. Thank you for your advocacy and all of your comments. Um, so I think the, the questions, we were talking about the 1.7 million dollars, I think Liza captured it correctly, um. Again, we still, we just got this yesterday, so we're still trying to figure it out. Um, back last year, there were the turnbacks of a million dollars, which at the point I remember. Thinking I can't believe we're sending that much back, um, but because of how the S R funding happened. It, it was just the way that it worked that um, we had, we created a budget, we get government funding and we had to, we use that. So that we could send back the million dollars. My first year on the committee, we sent back sixty nine thousand and I remember thinking that year it was, oh my gosh, I can't believe we're sending back sixty nine thousand dollars. Um, I wish it was as low as that now, um, but I wanted to comment on a couple of things, um. Because we just got this, one of the questions that I'm going to have on the age outs, that was part of where the 1.7 is coming out of. That is starting to happen this year, so when, when we say the age outs, those are the kids who are in special education who. Once they reach twenty two, we are no longer financially responsible for them, so. The age out started to happen this year instead of what John's projections were for next year. So my question to him is going to be a follow up question is going to be, does that impact our fiscal twenty three budget? Because if it does, if you remember, there was an amount for um, the age outs that was bringing our special ed budget down. Now that we're starting to use that, um, and some of the kids are starting to age out this year, is that going to then cause our budget for next year to go up? So it's just something that we need to work through. And we have been hearing from the parents on the um. The fine arts director, I really appreciate you putting that in there. What, what the parents don't see, but we are seeing and we feel is the um, the holes in central office. And you know, I, I think we need to talk through that with Aces tomorrow, but uh, you know, I, I made um, a comment once that. Given the fact that Dr. Mastis was going through the system and trying to find out vaccination rates for the kids. Would be the same as saying to a CEO, can you please go in and do an inventory for pencils? And it's just, it's crazy that that's where we are, but that's where we are and we've got a lean um, central office. Um, I think Doc, Dr. Gallo was doing uh, yeoman's work when she was there and we're trying to. Um, fill in those, those gaps now. Um, but the other question that had come up when you guys were deliberating was the um, adjustment counselors. So there is adjustment counselors at each of the elementary schools, um, proposed fiscal twenty three. So each one is seventy four thousand five five three and I did the quick calculation. Um, gets to be two hundred and thirty five thousand five thirty five. So I just wanted to um, answer all those things that had come up while you guys were deliberating, so thank you.
Thank you. Jen, Jen Benham. There we go.
There you go, thank you. No, I just, um, quickly just wanted to, you know, thank Dr. Gallo for her comment.
Name and address, please, sorry.
I'm sorry, Jen Benham, three hundred Gardner Street, I apologize. Um, I just want to quickly say thank you to Dr. Gallo for her comments around it being a projection. Um, and I want to reiterate on what Liza said regarding the hiring, you know, you're, you know, we've struggled to fill those power positions. Um, that's where, you know, some, some of that money, I guess, the savings you would, would say. Has been because we haven't been able to fill a lot of those positions and you know, ideas are, continue to be brainstormed on how to increase those positions. Um, and additionally, I just want to add that the S R funding, it was an overlay to the budget. And because the employees are being charged directly to the S R grant accounts, those expenses, they don't necessarily, they're not necessarily showing in the um, operating budget. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank you for your comments and support around the fine arts director position. Uh, you know, Kim, you ever pointed out the inequity compared to our sports programs and. Really need to show, you know, the value of ours in the town, I just wanted to. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other comments. So Michelle, um, on the line for the school budget. Can you add on the hundred and twenty thousand that we've discussed?
And I looked it up, I think it's actually one twenty two forty, if you want me to accept.
So you've added in, that's the one twenty two forty for the fine arts director, correct?
Yes.
So. At this point, I would uh, make a motion to recommend a fiscal year twenty twenty three budget. For the school department of. Sixty one million, nine hundred and forty six thousand, seven hundred and forty three dollars. Did I hear a second?
Uh, yes, I seconded.
Sorry, okay, uh, roll call vote, Liz.
Can I just ask a question, Joseph? Will we have a chance to evaluate this after Aces? Does there work?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, so um, the, our, my expectation is once this. Once we do this vote, it goes to advisory committee. And, and they will then do, do their due diligence, they're going to report back. Uh, on, to us in terms of their recommendations and then uh, based on uh. What Aces informs the AdCom. what ACES informs the AdCom of uh, it'll come back to us and we'll have a chance to to review this.
Okay.
And it would be my my strong expectation that we are looking for AdCom's uh advice and counsel on this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we've got this moved and seconded. Any further comments? I will take a roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye. We have now, believe it or not, at uh ten thirty-three, uh now concluded um item number eight on our agenda. Good news is we've already done item number nine, the COVID nineteen report uh COVID nineteen update. Uh, before I, I'm sorry, before I leave this, I I I really want to um thank uh those not just the school committee members, but members of the public who've been here. It's it's been a long hearing and um your input is just exceptionally valuable. And we do appreciate uh that that you took the time uh stuck with us to this late hour. Um, and we know it's 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 something that's important to you. It's important to us. And looking forward to a town meeting where we get this successfully resolved. Okay, um, I do not believe that we have any appointments to consider this evening. At this point, I'll accept comments from members of the public on items that are not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public with comments on items not on our agenda? Seeing none, we move to town administrator select board reports. I will start with Tom Mayo.
Thank you, Joe. Um, I uh I just wanted to call out, um, and and if one of you will do it, then I won't. But I just wanted to call out um Russ Khan, uh, who is a newly retiring member from the uh planning, from the personnel board. So I won't do that if one of you is planning to, but um, I could say that I've I've worked well with Russ for over many years. And uh and where the town is gonna be worse off without him. He is fantastic. He's patient. He's smart. He's a great teacher. Um, and I'm I'm gonna um I'm gonna miss having him on that board. Um, but Joe, Joe, before I jump into and ask you and turn it back over to you for other town administrative reports, I just wanted to point out, I don't know that we've voted the capital budget yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I missed that in my vote list. One second here.
We're on the vote list.
Let me see.
It's the last item.
Oh, there it is. Um.
So, we look it up.
Yes, this would be the vote for the capital outlay recommendations.
Ready for motion?
I am ready for motion.
Make a motion to approve the FY twenty-three capital outlay budget as recommended by the Capital Outlay Committee.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye. Tom, thank you for pointing that out.
At ten thirty-six, by the way, I want to extra pat on the back for that.
You deserve it. So Tom, any other, anything else that you wanted to add?
Nothing else.
Okay. Michelle.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Art.
Um, nothing, nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Except you're gonna go out and start writing up these grant proposals. That's 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 the message you're getting this evening.
Loud and clear.
Okay. Liz.
Um, nothing really to report, except that while we've been sitting here, the um Hang Um Boys Hockey Team won their game tonight.
Ah, awesome. Great.
Yeah, so that's fun.
Thank you. Bill.
Uh, yeah, I was funny, Liz. I was gonna say that the hockey team still in tournament and the boys and girls basketball team is still in team is still in tournament. And it's just, you know, I love driving around town this time of year and seeing the names on the uh light poles going down Main Street. So uh go out and support the teams and the tournaments as they go forward. So that's it.
Yes.
And so, Tom, with respect to Russ Khan, uh, he has not yet retired. He is in through the end of the fiscal year. So even though he's announced it, uh, I'm going to be uh making some comments, but I'm waiting till it's closer to his actual retirement. Um, because maybe he'll forget and he'll just stay on. Let's not, let's not remind him that he's leaving. Um, uh, I mean, I I've learned a lot from him. Uh, the town has benefited significantly from his from his efforts, from his commitments. But there'll be more to say as we get closer to his um actual retirement date. And with that, I am prepared at ten thirty-eight for a meeting that started at six to accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And Dr. Gallo, is it okay with you if we adjourn now? Okay, um, roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye.